I'm wired.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. It is 2:01. So we do have a quorum. So if I could go to Councilmember Thompson, welcome back. If you could do the invocation for us.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, dear Lord. Another day that you have created, another day that we haven't seen and we shall never see again. We just want to thank you, dear Lord. Thank you for life, strength, and health, heavenly Father. Thank you for letting us be in our right minds to be able to come together and do the work that you have so graciously given us the opportunity to do, heavenly Father. We don't call it a privilege. We call it an honor, an honor that you have bestowed upon us, heavenly Father. So bless us as we come together and do your work, heavenly Father. We pray for all of our citizens, all of our first responders, and all of our neighbors who are struggling right now, who are going through their ups and downs, their trials and their tribulations. Let them know that you can do anything but fail, heavenly Father, for you are our bright morning star, you are our great I am, you are the one who we call Jesus, Jehovah Jireh, Jehovah Rapha, Jehovah Nicodou. Dear Lord, we just want to say thank you, dear Lord, for all that you have done. Bless us this day and now and forevermore. We ask these things in your Son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the peaceful, liberty, and justice world.
Okay, before I go to the city manager, the mayor will be calling him. He is on his way to an economic development conference. So he will be calling in later. So, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and council members. As Jeff, if you could come on forward, sir. As you may know, and this will be as brief or as long as you would like to take, we have, last week, the council members prioritized the parking lot of items at your, what's, I think were your last scheduled, but of course we'll have as many of them as you need, but your last scheduled budget work session. And in front of you at everybody's place is the items that the council had prioritized for funding. And Jeff is going to walk very briefly through kind of a roll-up of what that looks like to make sure we have confirmation from council that we've gotten it correct, as well as to identify for you what are some funding opportunities for us to accommodate the parking lot that you gave us. Jeff?
Thank you. Good evening, council, good afternoon. As the manager mentioned, we just wanted to have a little touch point, if you will, a reconciliation of what we heard last Thursday. Talk real quick about the strategies. At this point, you have scheduled on Thursday of this week, another budget work session. We believe we've answered all of the outstanding questions from the Budget Chronicles, with the exception of one, which is related to the information by Census Track as far as assessed valuations. And that is an extensive project, and it'll take several months to put together, but we are working on it. But beyond that, I believe we've answered all of the Budget Chronicles questions. So with that, you have at your seat, the presentation I have for you today is just two slides, but also a clean copy of your revised parking lot, which represents what was on the whiteboard from last week. So these are the items that you voted on, and there was a consensus to include. So this is the work, this is what we worked on to balance the budget. So I'm excited to say the budget is balanced, and I'll explain how we achieved that. This includes all the parking lot items, and the budget is recommended. To achieve that, we did a couple of different things. As the mayor discussed, along with the change in the sales tax agreement, we had not included that in our fund balance anticipation as of last week. We went ahead and did an estimate of about 3.2 million of that funding coming in over. That's a little aggressive, but we don't feel like it's overly aggressive. The county is suggesting between 3.5 to 3.9 million. I think right around 3, but I think at 3.2, it's a fairly safe assumption, so it's not too aggressive. The other aspect of this, I challenged the team to look at vacancies. Did you have something, Doug? I'm sorry, you lean forward. Okay. The other thing that we talked about was our vacancy number. What we had was about 7% to 8% vacancy. We really sharpened our pencil on that, took a real good look at it, and got a little more aggressive, so we've got it in at about 12.2%. And the thing to remember about vacancy is we talk more in terms of dollars, so that's about 9.2 million of estimated vacancy savings, because not all vacancies are the same. So that includes carrying a number of vacancies based on the history. We run anywhere between 10% to 12% to 14%. So we're going to be right in that area, and we pushed that number up a little bit aggressively, but I think we'll be okay and can achieve that. The estimated fund balance then comes in at 24.3 million, which is just under $35,000 less than your 12% goal. And then there's about $7.3 million.
Exceeds.
I'm sorry, exceeds. I'm sorry, over your 12% goal. You have about $7.3 million of fund balance usage. This is being used on one-time items in accordance with your policy. The biggest chunk of that 3.3 for that 7.3 is being used for the Civil War History Reconstruction Museum, about 3.3 million. That was already in the recommended budget going forward. So with that, what you have left as far as process, today, we're just kind of going over a little bit of consensus and direction with council, and any open parking lot items, which is the list you have in front of you. We have the optional work session on Thursday, if you believe you need that. And then we are preparing the agenda item for Monday night for you to adopt unless there's direction otherwise. So with that, I'll be happy to try and answer any questions. We have a number of our directors here as well right now, and we just wanted to kind of follow up and give you that information.
All right, I'm going to go to Councilmember Hare. Thank you, Mr. Yates, and then Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Assistant Manager Yates. I'm going to go to my last question first, because you said it last. You stated that with the parking lot items, all the parking lot items, which are items that we have on this page here, you said that all of those items are now funded even if they are one-time funded for this, what is it, '25, '26, or '27?
For '25, '26.
Okay, for '25 or '26, which is fantastic. So if you could, even as we look at our ongoing budget funds and me as a small business person myself for 46 years, I like to look like further on down the road when I'm counting and counting my money. So help me understand. So as we look at our one-time budgets, which are going to be, are going to need additional funding again, okay? Our micro grants, we take it up to 100,000, and our police, but everything that we have on the ongoing. So my question is, have you looked ahead on how we're going to be able to fund those as we go into future? And the 7.3 that we had left over, if I'm looking at it, understanding it correctly, that was used for this parking lot, parking lot budget?
Correct. So I'll go, if I took out, I'll answer in reverse.
Yes, sir.
So the 7.3 million of fund balance usage, all of that, think of it as using your savings account for your investment. So that 7.3 is funding the 3 million of one-time funding items on this list, plus a few things we recommended in the CIP. So that is one-time things that don't have an ongoing commitment to them. The ongoing items, when we go to next year, we look at the base budget for next year, it'll be based on the amount of revenue the city is collecting. If there's growth in sales taxes, growth in other revenues, those will offset along with those other factors. So I can't tell you for certain right now what that looks like, but as we get into next year's budget, some of these items will become part of the base budget, or we'll be back for discussion next year in some form or fashion. So if there's not funding sufficient, once we evaluate next year with next year's council what the priorities are and everything else, then that'll make that, that'll give us direction on how we should proceed with those.
If I can do a deeper dive on that as well. If, Councilmember Hare, I know that you specifically referenced the micro grants. There's only one, probably multiple issues.
Well, I have several that, yes.
And so what were those other ones that you had considered?
Then, you know, we talked about the 6,000. We talked about, of course, the micro grants, and of course, well, everybody did, but I also was asking about the police and fire and the boards and commissions.
Yes, sir. The simple, I think, answer, and Jeff will back this up or tell me if I've gotten it wrong as well, the items such as the micro grants, the items such as the neighborhood signs, which was an issue, but we've, as we identified, we had extra money available
Yeah, I pulled back on that one.
Yes, sir, you did. As well as the support for council, as well as the boards and commissions. Those are very important to the smooth operation and for our outreach that we do for neighborhoods to try to support those types of activities. Those are able to be accommodated in an annual budget. The one that you did mention that we have to be cognizant of is the police and fire staffing and pay issues. Those are by the very nature, so very large, that the council has to make a conscious decision every year, along with the staff, to say that those will be funded. Last year, I think that when we did the pay plan, was that $14 million? It was some...
It was 10 to 12 million.
10 to 12 million dollars in salaries, and that is significant. And it really does speak to council's support and the importance that the council and the community places on public safety. But the ones that you mentioned, the, which, again, as you mentioned, you pull back on the signs, the micro grants, support for council initiatives and boards and commissions, those are important, but they're of a scalable size that we can accommodate those. So I feel very comfortable with the kind of roll-up that Jeff was doing, and as it relates for out-years for that, and do hold me accountable for this, I mean, but for the micro grants, what we really want is to build a capacity of those organizations, that they're not only able to use the city's money effectively, but they're able to then apply for external grants to actually amp up their services as well. We don't want anyone to just continually get a micro grant, a micro grant, and a micro grant. We want to build up their capacity to provide a service, to do the reporting, and then they can apply to the Cumberland Community Foundation, they can apply to the United Way, and support of their overall initiatives. So it really was micro grants, and I think sometimes keeping it small, and we're doing, Kelly, is that three tranches we were looking at of micro grants at about $50,000 each?
Two. At 100,000.
At 100,000. So again, $200,000 we're putting out there. That can help a lot.
Oh, yeah. I asked for, yeah, just 100,000.
Yes, sir. So I feel comfortable that your interest would be met with that.
Okay, so my final question for right now is, so you stated that because of everything that we spoke on at our last meeting from our white board, our black, our parking lot board, you're saying that we're ready to go with it, and you're asking that maybe even Monday, we could possibly move to adopt? Is that what you were asking when you said the word adopt?
Yes, sir. That would, we were, the plan was to put it on the agenda for Monday night, for Monday night's council meeting for you to approve the budget.
Okay, so then would we still have our Thursday this week?
Yes.
Okay. If you need it.
If you feel, believe you need it, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Dr. Hewitt, you pretty much answered my question, because I didn't want to put in my request, because I thought it was pertinent that we make sure we took care of our first responders, which I knew was going to be a substantial amount of money. But as most of you know, this has always been a concern of mine about the one-way-in, one-way-out interests. And I think it's paramount that we just don't do studies, but we do something about the studies that we do, because we spend a lot of money on studies. But, Mr. Yates, thank you for sending me that priority list, and I think the first three, and I pulled it up, the first three subdivisions is over $10 million. So I knew it wouldn't be feasible for me to ask for it this year, but I know next year, I would like for us to put it on our CIP for the Creek Ed subdivision, the Robin Hill, Robin Hood subdivision, and the King Grant subdivision. Those are the three priorities that you have so far listed.
So, Mr. Thompson, Councilmember Thompson, if I may, I think that we can pull that conversation and maybe go to FAMFO. You could talk to Councilmember Honduras, and Director Graham is in the room. So there's been quite a bit of work on getting that started and getting that done.
Keep me in the loop.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, let's see. Councilmember Honduras?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, ACM Yates. Question, a couple of questions on our, what was the parking lot list? The fifth bullet point down, the additional public safety cameras to the tune of about four and a quarter. Previously, council had, in a separate motion, moved to have at least five in West and Southwest Fayetteville, is at least for five cameras. Is that earmarked out of this four and a quarter?
My understanding is that would be included in that four and a quarter.
Right. Okay. Well, unless Chief tells me otherwise, I think West and Southwest was a focus we needed, right? Okay. And then, secondly, you know, I applaud Manager Hewitt, Dr. Hewitt, and staff for getting everything council asked for, which is everything the residents ask for in the budget and balancing it. Just want to make sure when we look at the compression pay for the first responders, PD and FD, this is in addition to the proposed budget when the manager presented it. We're not taking, we're not asking them to fix the compression within the budget. We've increased the budget so they don't have to take from their budget for vehicles or uniforms or anything else, correct?
That is correct. This is the funding that is in the recommended budget is to provide the step increases. This is 1.5 million in addition to the step increases to correct or fix any compression. And the original budget also included the study to figure out how to fix that issue permanently.
Which we'll look at by next year, hopefully.
That'd be the plan.
So then, the last question is regarding the vacancy, and you stated earlier, all the vacancies aren't the same. Some departments may be able to operate efficiently with a certain vacancy level, others may need a smaller or vacancy level. I just want to make sure, particularly in PD, that we have, and I didn't dive into it, maybe if you give me the pages, I can do a little more research, where it breaks down the PD budget as far as like vehicles and stuff, do we have the vehicles and the uniforms and equipment if we were to fill those vacancies that we're trying to fill? What I don't want to do is, hey, we've had 60 vacancies in PD, so we're going to sell off 30 squad cars because we don't think we need them, and then we hire those people, and then now we need 30 squad cars.
No, sir. We believe the maximum throughput, and this goes back to Chief Brayden, and I know I've talked to Chief Joyce about this, there's a maximum throughput of the academy. So we believe that we have sufficient vehicles, equipment, and everything necessary for that maximum throughput. In other words, they can't fill as many vacancies as they have in a single year. If we were to get to, to maybe say where we had to tap into the frozen positions to have that, then we'd be coming back to you to authorize some different things. But we believe we have sufficient vehicles and everything else for a significant number of recruits.
But I know in the past, in budget discussions, last year, the year before, it was explained to council that a lot of times we'll purchase vehicles, I may not use the exact term, but we purchase a bunch of vehicles, then we end up selling them back, basically kind of leasing them, so we can, for lack of a better term, amortize that.
Right. And this budget doesn't include any of that. So what we have done though is we have restored, if you remember last year, we took out the police replacement vehicles because we felt like we had enough on hand. We still have a significant number on hand, but we have restored the funding for some replacement vehicles. So as we go through the year, we'll continually monitor that with our fleet team and replace the ones that need to be replaced, and if there's an influx of new officers, we'll be able to put them in vehicles as well. So we'll ensure they have a sufficient fleet to cover anyone that's coming in.
Very good. And I didn't bring my budget book with me, it's in the car, because I didn't think we were doing this today. But what can, before we leave today, can someone tell me what pages that PD budget breakdown is, so I can look at it?
I believe it was in your Chronicles, and we can find the exact question.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before Councilmember Hare?
Thank you again, Mayor Protem. Mr. Yates, give the balance, if you did, please forgive me for re-asking, what did you say the balance, our fund balance would be? What would be the overall amount with using the, with using the 7.3 million for the, for what we have on this list? Where would we be now?
You'll be at 24.3 million, estimated.
Okay.
And then if you look right below the second, the fourth bullet on that,
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
You'll exceed your 12% policy goal by about 34,000, a little over 34. So you're right at, we took it down to your 12%. To be able to fund everything, we took it down to the 12% goal.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I overlooked that.
No worries.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we good?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Yates.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? All right, I got a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember Green. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, I think that is... Is the mayor on?
He is not.
No, he's not on. Okay, that is unanimous with those present. All right, let's move on. We will go to 6.01, presentation from Pallet Shelter.
Good afternoon, council. Kelly Strickland here, Assistant City Manager, to introduce this item. If, just a brief recap, the Homeless and Mental Health Committee, on April 3, at their meeting, received a presentation from Mr. Ben McCrell of Pallet Shelter. And then at council's April 28 meeting, an update of the committee's activities was presented to the entire council, and a motion was passed to have Mr. McCrell come to this work session and provide the same presentation. So he is online with us on Teams, Zoom, some virtual connection, and will be providing the presentation to you all. Mr. McCrell?
Hi, thanks for inviting me, and thanks for allowing me to present remotely. I'm attempting now to throw up a quick slide here, let me know if you all are able to see that image with that pallet logo and one of our shelter structures.
We can see you, I'm sorry, yes.
Great, I'd just like to have a quick verbal confirmation. I've definitely done this presentation to a blank screen a few times, and it's not helpful for the folks I give it to. But hi, my name is Benjamin McCrell. I'm here with Pallet Shelter. Pallet Shelter is a public benefit corporation, it's been around since 2018. We are primarily focused on our workforce organization, but the products that we offer are highly tailored by our workforce specifically for unsheltered folks or folks experiencing a housing emergency. We've been lucky enough to be in a position that we are the industry leader for these types of shelter structures. Oftentimes, you'll hear the entire concept of the non-congregate shelter villages called pallet shelter villages. It's a little fun to be the industry Kleenex, but it's always nice to have that honor as well. I am located in upstate New York. I'm very sad not to be there today. We've reduced our travel budget significantly, but I'm hoping that whatever our next meeting is going to be, it's going to be right there in town, and we'll be able to have the meeting onsite, right there with y'all, or right at our potential village site, with hopes. Jumping ahead here. So we are in over, actually, this is a little outdated, we're in over 5,200 shelters have been deployed. We're over, in over about 130 different communities across North America. The shelters are everywhere from British Columbia down to San Diego through Texas over to Tampa, Florida, where we just installed our second set of 90 shelters in Tampa, all the way up to Nova Scotia, where we have some 200 shelters scattered across the province with our actual, actually, with our partner, the province of Nova Scotia. So jumping ahead one more time, the typical concept for the non-concrete village, for unsheltered folks, is a group of at least six or so shelters in a sort of enclosed community setting where they can have access to the necessary supportive materials, bathrooms, of course, laundry facilities, service options, and community rooms where they can, you know, grab a bite to eat, or whatever other additional community spaces they might have. That's typically what we're talking about when we talk about a pallet shelter village. That said, like I said, we're in over 130 different communities, 5,200 shelters out there in the world. there in the world, we definitely have instances where we're working directly with very small nonprofits or churches, and they just have one or two little shelters behind their facility. We're working, like I said, with Tampa, which is going to have probably 225 shelters in one location at the end of this year with Catholic charities. The typical group of shelter size is anywhere between that six and about 30. We find that to be a really great number because you're able to have the onsite support that you need with about six or more folks, that you're able to provide the case management full-time to really make this place not just a place to wind up, but a place to transition through to more permanent housing solutions. Other part of this deck here, I actually like to talk about this essentially as what we're able to provide versus what the city or local nonprofit operator agency is going to be able to provide. Like I said, we're a manufacturer, we are going to manufacture the shelter structures, and if you need them, bathroom facilities, laundry facilities, community rooms, offices, all the infrastructure that you would need to develop that site. But you're going to want to rely on local supportive services, the existing communities, nonprofits, case managers already in your community that are trained up on the best ways to help people locally. Hygiene facilities, like I said, we can provide them, but we can't bring in water from Washington State, so we'll rely on, on our local partners like yourself to figure out some of the, the necessary height, the infrastructure to get the piping and the sewer and the electrical onsite. Transportation, I always like to think of this really as more about site selection than transportation. When you're choosing a location right downtown, when residents can pop across the street to pick up a toothbrush, go to a doctor's appointment, visit their church, transportation is, you know, the front gate of the facility, whereas if you're choosing a place out near the water treatment facility, that's a great choice, too. That can make it a lot easier to get these types of projects done, but you do have to think about how residents continue to participate in the society in the way that they need to, and how will they choose to live in the shelter village even if it is outside their typical comfort area? So adding that as a layer of transportation is sort of an interesting, a sort of a, a key component of continuing to think about the site. Safety, all, I'm going to go into the individual pallet shelter structures, individual safety features, but what I always like to talk about on the first go-around is the shelter structures, I mean, I can like duck away here, they can be kind of interesting looking, people are interested in seeing them if they've seen them the first time. We always really want to make sure because of that, you are providing a privacy shelter, a privacy fencing around the shelters. We never want to have anybody looky-loos, playing tourist, wandering through a shelter site, and folks are experiencing some of the hardest days of their lives, and they don't want to be in the background of someone's interesting architecture feature. So typically, we just really rely on, on, on the sites themselves to provide that privacy, and of course, the last, obviously, access to food and water, that's going to be locally through your own regional nonprofits. The same folks who are typically providing access to those things now can be amped up and really re-energized and refocused with, with a non-congregate shelter village site. So, just jumping ahead here, again, we are going to talk about some of the success metrics. The reason we talk about the village and that model is that we have, like I said, been around since 2018, we've done this a lot of times, we've seen some incredible success metrics. Every shelter village is different, you all are the site owners and the site operators locally, again, we're just providing that infrastructure for you. So the rules and regulations for each site can be different, we've worked with sites where there's no barrier to entry. Folks are allowed to be in the thralls of whatever they are in, and they're just given a place to she, to sleep that night. Other places have higher barriers to entry, there are clean sites, there are sites where exclusively senior citizens or veterans, or only for women, or only for men. We know that you, these, the folks in, in the room there, know what's most necessary for your community and how to best help, so we're gonna defer to you all on those types of decisions. But you can see here in these shelters here, and this is just a quick example of them, we have a, a bigger document I'm going to send over to all of y'all to peruse for, with deeper dives into, into all of these issues and all of these statistics I'm going over. But the success metrics, you know, throughout a year, folks getting more permanent housing after transitioning through the pallet shelters can be incredibly high. Okay, moving ahead, again, we are, wanted to look at the, the, the safety and the security concerns, you know, that I, I know you're thinking primarily about the folks who are currently living on the streets, but you're also thinking about the communities those folks are living in. At pallet, we can directly point to existing studies where the numbers of police calls and emergency calls before a pallet shelter moves in, and then after a pallet shelter moves into a community, in a community with an existing unhoused population, those emergency calls go dramatically down. When folks have a place to live, unsurprisingly, when they have a place to use the bathroom, when they have a place to spend their days, you're, you're gonna get a lot less vandalism, you're gonna get a lot less concerns over public indecency when folks have a place to call their own, and frankly, when folks have a place to call their own, they're not just folks in your neighborhood, they're your neighbors. So they go from being something that folks are worried about and watch out for, to other folks in the neighborhood watching out and making sure people are on their best behavior. And it's a great way of really reprioritizing essentially where you're spending money. Would you rather be spending money on police calls? Would you rather be spending money helping these folks transition to a better living environment and to being more effective and pleasant citizens and to being around, and really more effective and pleasant people for themselves? So that, that's one of the things that we always like to point out and talk about quite earnestly with, with the pallet shelter non-congregate villages, is that they really improve not just the, the outcomes for the folks who are unhoused, but the entire neighborhoods around it, they can improve business outcomes, they can improve entire, entire real estate outcomes, and in a way that is very positive. And, little bit about us, Pallet Shelter, like I said, we announced it's 2018, we are a public benefit corporation. Our workforce model is that about 55% of my colleagues here, more than half of my colleagues are folks who have experienced homelessness, who are in a journey of recovery or have had experiences with the criminal system in the US. We have a class, we have a, a program where we hire on essentially an entire class of floor staff members. They, of course, spend a year learning everything we can teach them, Tuesday through Friday, in assembling these structures, working with aluminum and SIP and tools and everything they can learn, but on one day a week, they're actually offsite at a local nonprofit, local Institute of Higher Education, picking up a lot of life skills, career skills, and job skills that they might not have otherwise had access to. At the end of the year, we are foolish enough to graduate these folks and send them on to apprenticeship programs in the, the Pacific Northwest in the construction trades, and we start it all over again. That's really the biggest core tenet of our, of pallet shelter. That is our, our, our main job, is getting folks trained and ready and back out there into the workforce and, and then really stabilize, and that's just one of the interesting aspects, not something I typically talk about going forward in a lot of these conversations, but as a company, it's always worthwhile knowing who you're doing business with and what their goals are and what they are hoping to grow in the future. That's the first part of this conversation. I want to just jump in really quick, ask if there's any immediate questions about who I am, who pallet is, because after this, I'm going to go into the products that we offer, the shelter structures, the restroom structures, the hygiene facilities, et cetera, and go into a deeper dive there, but any initial questions at this point in time about the company or the, the concept of the non-congregate village and who it might serve?
So, thank you very much for your presentation. Councilmember here, are you prepared?
I, I, I am, but let's let him, because we're kind of sliding through.
Okay.
And I got some questions, so let him.
We'll hold on.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, please continue.
Appreciate it, thanks. So really quick, here is our standard shelter. This is the, what we call the S70, meaning it's a 70-square-foot shelter. It is a flat pack unit, which basically comes in the back of a tractor-trailer, up to 14 of those units can fit on. The only heavy equipment that's needed to install them is that big pallet jack device, the telemark there, really just dropping these units into place. They are then quickly assembled typically by our team in as little as a day, but we can also train local locals or your local volunteers or staff as well. And then, before they, they were certified for occupancy, our staff would come out and do a quick inspection, make sure everything was plugged, plugged together the right way. But these units are very quick and simple to put up, typically a team of two to four folks can assemble one of these units. It goes up in about an hour, and it's fully fitted out within a total of about three. We rely on y'all, and we can give a lot of guidance here as well, or point you to some general contractors, but we rely on y'alls, local contractors to typically plug these in with, like I said, electrical, and if we're talking about any of the more elaborate units, the plumbing. But otherwise, they're pretty much ready to go out of the proverbial box. Little more detail about the S70, and then we'll jump into some of the other units. These units, as you can see, have leveling feet on the bottom, so we don't have to be in a perfectly level spot, we just have to be in a spot that's heading in that direction. Typically included in this model is the ADA with doorway, the emergency escape window in the back that opens for a quick little breeze as well. The shelving units, the ACs, the heating units, the lighting, the three-prong plug and the USB plug, as well as smoke detector, CO2 detector, and the fire extinguisher. We can also offer the desk and the bed, or you can find that locally, of course. That typically is the single occupancy unit, this is what we would refer as a dual occupancy unit, and great for small families, can absolutely imagine a young couple and a baby with a crib in this unit as well. Essentially, the same unit stretched out 120 square feet instead of 70 square feet, the same things included, the heat, the AC, the window, the ADA door, et cetera, et cetera. Move a little quicker from those ones. These two units, like I said, are going to be flat-packed, arrive, and go together quite quickly. The benefit to that is that they are movable and modular, and essentially, we have a lot, a lot of our shelter structure sites are temporary. You know, there's a plan by this city to install affordable housing in five years, or a stadium in eight years, or even in three years, and you're able to still move these units in, prep this site, and actually prep the site for that eventual construction, and host the population necessary for that three-year period. A lot of times, cities limit residency in our shelters at about six months, but I think the average stay is typically around four to eight months. But on average, that the, like I said, I think that you would typically see two to three residents per year, but that's a local operator decision on, on how quickly folks are moving through, what they need to demonstrate in terms of their job hunt, their housing hunt, and how they're being assisted in, in terms of that, so to maintain residency. Going forward again, this is the first of our pre-assembled units, this is the en suite, this is basically that same 120-square-foot shelter with the bathroom installed. This bathroom includes a shower, sink, mirror, of course, a hot water heater installed in the unit as well. This one is the first one that requires that plumbing hookup. Typically, like I said, we, we recommend either parking lots that could be repurposed or green or brownfield development. I always like to recommend coming in, basically trenching out the plumbing they needed, dropping down any, what do they call, the, the rolls of the, the weed control rolls on top of that, and dropping a few, a few inches of gravel on top. It's a quick, simple, and easy way of, A, cleaning up the site very quickly, and B, establishing a clean-looking site that is also very quickly and readily drainable, addressing any, any water concerns on the site. That's one of the ways that most typically these units are very quickly deployed. Jumping forward here, we have our two-stall bathroom unit. This is additionally, a pre-assembled unit would come out on a flatbed. These units are also totally modular and movable, you can scoop them up with a fork drop and move them to whatever site you might need it, and then plug these units in. Everything is included here, you might expect, the shower stall, the toilet, the sink, the electrical, the heat, et cetera, et cetera. Everything's pretty much ready to go, your local plumber will wind up installing the porcelain toilet and sink. We learned the hard way that porcelain does not work well in terms of highway transportation when it's outside of its little styrofoam, but, you know, if you're not driving it from Everett, Washington to the East Coast, you know, I'm sure you'll be fine in, in making that transition happen. Last hygiene unit here, this is our accessible version of that bathroom. The, this version has a full ADA accessible shower, the bench, the grab bars, basically the full turnaround space needed, but adding that space to that 100-square-foot shelter, we did have to reduce the other bathrooms, that's now just a half-bath. We always jokingly refer to that as a staff bathroom. The laundry room is something that we can also offer, would come with four dryer hookups, four washer hookups, heat, AC, lighting, et cetera, as well as a utility sink. This unit is, again, something you can drop and plug in quite quickly, ready to go. We do not include the washer and the dryer, just kind of easier to have your local Home Depot lows, your local hardware store have that warranty, anytime you need a 79-cent gas kit, you don't have to have it shipped from Everett, Washington. Last unit here I want to talk about, this will be the community room. This is the largest unit we offer, this is the one we see as the central space to any of these facilities, a place people can go. Obviously, they can maybe grab a bite, if it's set up like a cafeteria, if it's set up like offices, they can meet their case managers. If it's set up just as a community room, it's a place where they can go and spend time without needing to spend money, which is a complicated place to find if, for anybody. And, you know, this unit is the one unit that we do need to install ourselves, it has the largest, I'm going to call them Lego pieces or IKEA pieces, so we do like to maintain this, but every, every single other one of these units, your local folks can be trained to install them. The other thing I'd like to note about the community room, even though this is the one large, single large-scale facility, we do have a lot of our clients choosing to use the 120 as community space, or office space, or service space, as well as even the, the 70, in terms of storage, or, you know, an office for an onsite manager and things like that. So it's just a different ways of thinking about those same existing shelters, if it's prepackaged, ready to go, the difference between a bed and a nice desk and some storage bins can be the difference between a, a, a shelter and a, a site manager's facility. Yeah, jumping here to the last cat, last slide, this just quickly shows off one of their, you know, one of the clearest ways that pallet has been successful. You know, if you can imagine yourselves, you know, on the street with your family members, and one of those family members just happened to have four legs, it can be really hard to have to give up those, those, those members of your family to accept a congregate shelter bed. And, and it makes sense that, you know, you wouldn't necessarily want to be in a big room, crowded room with a lot of people and a lot of dogs, but the, the pallet shelter model really has opened up the shelter options for folks who are, are, you know, taking care of, of their four-legged friends, and that, that's something that we've seen a huge amount of success with in the past. Really quick, just covering one or two of the things. Like I said, we are ready to do the install and train your team for install. The sites we recommend are either quick, are all essentially quick build, unloved areas typically, empty fields that don't have anything, or parking lots, or, you know, just margins of, of existing property, that may make sense, we don't need a lot of space to create a large and successful non-congregate shelter community. And we can always provide, like I said, nationwide contractors who've done this dozens of times, if you want to go that route, or we can give you all the information, we've given over 130 different communities that have done this locally, provided them with all that information as well. And in terms of, like I said, the site operation, we have shelters, like I said, with no barriers, and we have shelters that are for exclusively very defined sets of folks, and we know that you know the best choices for that. And, and, and just to jump in, the first question I always get from anybody I'm chatting with in government is, you know, this seems great, is it too great? Will this attract a population? The answer to that is, again, that's essentially up to you, that's up to the local site operators. You can limit who is eligible for these sites, that is what a lot of cities do, they have to, you know, folks, residents. know, folks' residents have to have some sort of relationship with uh the the site location, the region, et cetera. And um typically, folks don't show up. They don't pull the address out of a phone book and show up to a shelter. They are referred to a shelter by the local folks uh in the networks, in the community cares networks that they're already exposed to. And so um, there it is not the case that by installing a pallet shelter community, the overall size, the community typically increases. Although, you will definitely find folks who are living on the margin, perhaps living in their car, realizing this might be a better option for them. So folks who may not have been recorded before may be recorded, but there are folks who absolutely needed the help long before uh pallet shelter model was included. All right, I'm uh ready to take any any particular questions. I I know uh Councilwoman McNair gave me a little advice on uh chatting about next steps as well, but I figure we might wanna have a little conversation about the the products themselves.
Okay, so thank you very much, and I will go to Councilmember here.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor Protim. Thank you, Ben, for your uh presentation. You gave a lot of information and um, which this is basically an information meeting today, and I do appreciate that. Uh, tell me how, if you can answer this, or if there's something that's on our end to answer, since we're just getting this today. Uh, at first, I was gonna ask about heat and AC, but as I looked through one of them, I did see um some overhead lights uh with some conduit running through on the on the outside of the uh, so I did see that. So I think that's gonna take away uh one of my questions. Um, once they are up, once they are up and erected and ready for operation, have you gotten any feedback? Uh, if you can answer those questions from from these uh five locations that you have in your presentation on uh on on maintenance and and how involved those in communities are in maintenance, uh do you get any feedback on what the cost of of that uh might be from some of these uh communities? Uh, even though I I know you say you only started started these in 2018, and um as far as security costs and things along that line, are are those any type of things that fall back to you, that you have conversation on with these cities? Or is your big thing uh just to erect them whichever size is chosen, and you step away from the project uh after that, and it's up to the uh the the cities? So I wanna know about maintenance and upkeep. Do you get feedback from that, from the communities, and what that cost is? Security, I wanna understand, do you, have you received any feedback from uh of these uh cities that are located in your your sketch, um, in your presentation? As far as applic- applicants or applications, uh, how 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 is that done? Is that that's something that falls on uh the city of Fayetteville, or any city, or the city's partners, just like we have partners that will that we use on with our resource centers now? So could you answer any of those questions? Uh, does that fall back to you? Do you hear about that? Can you respond? Or you are just mainly with constructing, erecting, and then kinda moving on?
Yeah, so um, we do not operate any of the sites. So in in this, in one sense, yes, we are very quick to construct, uh approve, move out. But um, this is a process that typically takes many months, if not years, you know, and and we would like to set you up for long-term success in that time, and we will be available at all all future points to uh assist. Obviously, there's a two-year warranty on all the units. The expected lifespan for the standard shelters is 15 years. Uh, for the more complicated, or the the standard shelters is 20 years, and the more complicated ones, we've drilled a bunch of holes in for electrical and plumbing, et cetera. The bathroom units, the hygiene units, those have a 15-year lifespan. Um, the um, so yeah, in terms of uh just jumping back to maintenance, because we're talking about that point, um, the the units themselves are designed specifically for um this population and for sort of basically incredibly hard use. Um, uh, one of our PDFs I could share with you at some point is how to properly power wash the inside and outside of these units between uh residents. Uh, that's of course not always required, but it can be. Um, and uh, the um, the the SIP, the structurally insulated panels that these are made up of, are incredibly hard, incredibly strong. Uh, you know, they are easily cleaned. If you ever have graffiti on them, they can be wiped down with alcohol. It's uh the 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 materials themselves, uh, on the outside, it's what they call fiber-reinforced plastic. It's essentially what they many of, what they um install in uh fast food restaurants and hospitals, uh in surgery rooms to maintain uh 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 high levels of cleanliness. Um, so in terms of maintenance, you know, absolutely, we've uh ongoing conversation, like I said, since 2018. We're some of our earliest units, and we'll be honest, we call this S2. This is really the 18th version of uh our shipped uh our shipped shelters. We've we've learned a lot over time uh through hard use, uh of course. Uh, but this is the shelters that we feel most confident about in all that time, of course. Uh, and they are designed uh to be um as maintenance-free as possible. In terms of budgets, we can definitely refer you to uh existing budgets from existing sites going forward. That, of course, is gonna vary any, like I said, there are sites that are six shelters and there are sites that are 100. Um, and there's economies of scale, and then there's also the fact that some of these sites are in LA, in the heart of the city, and therefore costs are higher. And some of these sites are in the middle of the country where um, you know, living costs and labor costs are much lower, et cetera. So there's there's never exactly a one-to-one in terms of the mathematics that I can provide, but I can provide quite a bit of guidance going forward in terms of maintenance costs.
Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, but as I was saying, as for some of those questions, I guess uh if you can send those uh proposals that you 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 said that you could send, I think it would be good if we had that to kinda look at that, even though we would have to do our own homework here on on our end. I would um, I would uh greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay. Two other question about residents, then then yeah, we can, again, provide a lot of guidance about how other sites have selected their residents or selected their criteria for uh application. Um, but that would ultimately, of course, be your decision.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember here, are you are you done?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I was just thinking that it's depending on how our discussion goes today, today, that's something that our assistant manager.
I guess, is there a question about?
So what, so what we can do is, we're gonna go to Councilmember Thompson, and then we'll take a up-down vote on whether we wanna proceed or not on any more information. Okay, Councilmember Thompson?
Uh, I just had two questions. One is, I am not for community bathrooms when it comes to something like this. What is the difference in prices from the 700-square-foot units with and without bathrooms first?
Yeah, the price difference at that point in time, um, the product cost, the sort of basic product cost, not including the um install or shipping, the, you know, bed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is this is information I'm gonna send over as well directly after this meeting. So uh, n- not sharing any secrets, but I wouldn't wanna give you the impression that this is the all-in cost. But the listed product cost for that standard 70-foot shelter is uh 15,900, about 16 grand. For that larger dual occupancy or small family shelter, that's about uh $21,000. And then for the, that same tw- uh 1,200 uh or one, 120-square-foot shelter with the en suite bathroom, uh, that is about $44,000. And certainly a little bit more complicated of a build and uh a lot more uh stuff in that purchase. So we do like, to be honest, you know, the the decision is ultimately yours, whether or not, you know, for the, you might be interested in purchasing two of the shelters uh at the the 70-square-foot, uh or one of the en suite units. Um, that's that's a hard decision, and that falls still ultimately to the folks there in that room.
Thank you, sir. My second question is, what zoning will these uh pallet homes be authorized to move into?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, that that is definitely something that varies county by county. Like I said, we've done this 140 different communities across the country. Um, and that doesn't even include the various little localities within cities where we have multiple sites, like I said, like LA, larger cities like Denver. Um, most of the time, uh, it does essentially fall to the city council or the 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 government to create some sort of uh special zoning area or type of waiver. These wouldn't necessarily fit under residential uh um, you know, our traditional R1 um zoning. But um, there's been a lot of other examples where we found existing zoning where it does fall under the that that particular um requirements. That we've done campsites, we've done non-congregate shelter villages, which is some people have on their books. Um, so it would be a specific question. We would have to dig into it. Um, but mo- basically, that it is essentially always possible where the political will is available. And of course, all of these shelters are designed to meet all of the safety codes required um in any any one of those uh, you know, 130 different communities uh in the past.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Um, so before I add my questions, um, I'll go to Councilmember Benevento.
Mr. City Manager, what do you need necessarily to help make this a reality here in Fable at this point, now that we've received some information about?
Really, uh, thank you. Uh, uh, direction from council. I think that um, number one, if you're interested in pallet villages, um, we have spent a lot of time um with um with this gentleman, and he's answered almost every question conceivable that we've thrown at him. There may be other vendors who are out there who may offer similar. Um, but really, the question is, um, as someone said, what zoning, how long, how much, um, how managed? Um, and some of it could be that um today, what staff needs, and I think the committee has requested, is having met on this and discussed it for two years? Yeah, um, the first time we had the pallet villages come forward, if this is something that council is interested in, um, then give us direction of how to pursue that in what areas and a timeframe to report back. Um, clearly, this is not a product that we have in the city at the moment. Um, was listening very carefully uh um that uh the sweet spot, it sounds like, from um, um, and I can't remember his name, I'm so sorry.
Ben.
Ben, sorry, Ben. Apologies for that. Um, was uh six to 30? Um, how are those folks vetted? Would the places stay up for 30, 60, 90 days? Um, it clearly is the answer um for um uh housing challenges at a particular time in emergency shelter. It's clearly, I think, is an opportunity for that. But what we need, specific to your question, is, is this the the need that the council wants us to pursue? Because next would be us identifying funding. Next would be identifying possible locations. Uh, next would be a very, very thorough review against the state building codes, how we could um comply with the state building codes. Um, and um, but really, I think that the committee's ask, again, goes back to, and if I can refer to committee members who are here, and definitely to chair, um, I think there was an email that you sent out earlier today that identified, but that's what we need, answers to those questions uh for the committee for us to proceed.
And was their discussion, I came in a little bit late, um, to the gentleman online, uh, Mr. Ben, on the que- topic of management of the facility, did you say that you guys uh do work with that, or you just make recommendations?
The typical arrangement would be oftentimes, the city would own the uh site and the materials, and then find a local nonprofit operator uh to manage it. Of course, like I said, with 130 different sites, that's not always the case, uh, but that is most often uh the case. We do have partners interested on a national level in pursuing anyone who'd be interested uh in finding a uh national partner, you know, would happy to set you up with uh someone like that. But most of the time, it's gonna, mo- most of the time in the existing sites, it is a local nonprofit, or something like a local branch of Catholic charities or United Way that would manage this.
Well, I think that's great.
Salvation Army, actually.
I think that's great that she said that um we might have some recommendations for us of folks who do it successfully um on the national level. Um, I guess, just the last thing to close it out, and I'm hoping that um Councilmember McNair, that you're prepared to make a motion um to request that city um manager and his staff um pursue this further, look into um IDing, funding, locations, compliance with relevant codes, um, and that we have that back um by the next work session, um which I guess won't be until August. Um, so that's two months. Um, I'll just leave that to you to make that motion. But, you know, to the rest of my colleagues, you know, this could be an incredibly significant move um towards doing what I think a lot of our constituents have asked us to do, is to really um something substantive on issues of homelessness here in the city of Fayetteville. If we get it started on a small scale, I think it's only a matter of time before the county and other partners wanna help us scale this to to go grow even further. But that we have all the power and uh potential in the world to start something um really revolutionary here, um with this opportunity that um we, I say that we we take that very seriously today, rather than um coming up with reasons why we can't do something uh as productive as this. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protim. So um, number one, if we did decide to move forward something like this, we would have to, I would imagine we'd have to do a bid process of some sort, right? Cause there's probably some competitors out there, maybe, maybe not, just food for thought. Um, Ben, could you speak to, I think I saw on the map, there's a North Carolina location? What, if any, cities in North Carolina are you in currently?
Yeah, so there is, there is a a program in Greensboro. Um, I don't know as much about them as I should, uh, but there are, there is a current uh program uh up in Greensboro that uses our shelters at this point in time. I'm happy to send some further information about that program along, if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, uh, cause my next question was, do your um structures um satisfy North Carolina state building codes?
I believe that is the case, yes.
Okay, I'm getting a no from staff, but uh, Dr. Newton, if if uh if I may come back to you in just a second. Um, Ben, you mentioned, if I heard correctly, um, about five to six support personnel and or quote-unquote "local" operators. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Um, in in what sense? Sorry, I just wanna be sure I'm answering the the correct question.
So typical, I mean, I guess the size varies for these communities from, I mean, theoretically, you could have one that has two or three pallet homes or pallet structures to one that has 100 or more, right? So.
Yeah, found it. Yeah, so to, uh, what I was attempting to say, and perhaps misspoke, but I I I was saying, I, we typically recommend a cluster of about six or so shelters. That can be essentially a full-time caseload for a case manager, um, moving folks along. Anything less than that is, you know, might be harder to do partial staffing hours, or um you might have someone who is not able to spend sort of their full amount of energy uh with that group of folks. Uh, but uh, yeah, typically about six, six uh shelter villages or more, of course. Um, you're gonna be able to have uh, you know, site site managers um available, uh, case managers available onsite to uh help these folks uh more proactively, you know, uh settle, and then move on to the next uh step in their their housing and and life journeys.
Yeah, that those terms, you know, case managers and and um stuff that, that's kind of um, I remember with my time on the Homeless Men and Health Committee, um, you know, these are services typically, we don't, we don't have staff members for, and the partners that do that are either nonprofit or affiliated with the county. So the more and more I hear about this, I I think it potentially is a great um thing. I think that the county um may be better suited for this. But um, while I have you, Ben, on infrastructure, uh, and this started to be asked by my colleague, but I don't know that we ever got an answer. So there's no infrastructure. You're you just have like a kit, basically. You ship the kit to us. We we have to hire somebody to put it together, hook it up with electrical plumbing, correct?
Essentially, yeah. The the shell, the shelter infrastructure is is what we manufacture and ship. Um, like I said, we can install that as well, but we would typically rely on local contractors. we can install that as well, but we would typically rely on local contractors to do any site grading or site preparation, including installing plumbing and electrical. The, the one thing I'll say about that, it may feel like, wow, no one's ever done this type of thing in our community before. The site grading and electrical hookups is essentially the same requirements as would be needed in a modular home park.
Right.
Or a campsite. So it is, it is a different thing, but it is essentially similar to what contractors have done probably hundreds of times.
So do your kits have HVAC units, or are they compatible?
Correct, correct. We, we have AC, we have a couple of AC units, a couple of heater units available, different power levels. We wouldn't want to ship the same unit to Miami that we do to Nova Scotia. So we would typically tailor a quote for you based on your climate, including the best units for Fayetteville, and suggest those units be included in that quote. But they would be shipped with the shelter and installed by, again, either our team or the local contractor, and then the, basically, the entire unit, when it was powered, would enable powering those heaters or AC units.
Thank you, Ben. Dr. Newton, if I may, can you speak to the state building codes with relation to these structures?
Yes, and good afternoon, council. They consider these temporary sleeping units. The state building code then does not apply, except for a guidance paper that they've issued on this. Let me say that differently. If these were permanent structures, they wouldn't come close to complying, other than the square footage. You can have a living habitable space seven feet by seven feet. So that part does. But they consider these as temporary sleeping units, not to be up more than 180 days. And because of that, and with that guidance, that's why they have, where you can have the plumbing within 500 feet of the living units. That's why other things that come into place, like each of these buildings, have to be 20 feet apart from each other. Because while they may be good in operating room and nice and shiny, clean, they also burn. So 20-foot separation. So to answer your question, sir, they don't comply with the building code, they weren't designed to comply. And the other parts that have to be brought in are what normal trades are accustomed to.
The temporary, you said how many days? 120 or 180?
180, not to exceed 180.
Not to exceed. Okay. So to the manager's office, I would just ask if there would be any kind of bid process or something. I don't know if you can speak to that today, or if you want to get back to us on it. And then, I don't know, just for me, the more I hear, I think this, or something similar to this, I think would be great for the county, our county partners, to kind of pursue, and we could assist them, partner with them any way we can, including coming up with a zoning form. But I don't know if this is our purview. But, Mr. Manager, I don't know if you prefer to try to answer today, or if you want to email us back. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, Mayor Protem, if I might, I'd ask if the committee wants to opine on this as well, because we've not had a chance to talk about it. But if council gave us the direction and we satisfied all the questions which are foot, one of the things that we would want to do is to potentially look at our ECD department, to see if that would be funded, if the funding were there, a general fund, for us to actually issue an RFP of some sort, that would be able to accommodate, where we'd be able to identify in the RFP what services we're looking for. And it might be, not only in addition to the helping identify on a location that would meet interest, a local partner, might even be for the types of shelters of someone to run it, because there are the intensive case management, but the case management, we'll say intensive case management. All of those things, I think, you would, I would rather someone propose something to us, so that we could see how it all fits together. But we can do both. We can put it out as a pallet shelter with a concept, if we identify a location, and then solicit various elements. But again, we're really, to answer Councilmember Benevente's original question, we can do any and all of it, we just need direction from the council. And the committee members, again, have spent a significant amount of time reviewing these materials, both in Florida, was it October, November we were there?
December.
December. And then several committee meetings since then. So we're just here to support council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Honduras, are you done? Okay. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, council, I made the motion from the Homelessness Committee to bring this to council, not because I support it, but because it needed to have more discussion. And some of the reasons I do not support this, and I made it very clear then, is some of the same questions you guys are asking out, zoning issues. And so my question today is, where, where would this go? Like, because we already have residents who don't want duplexes behind their house in the backyard. Now we're talking about putting maybe pallets close to neighborhoods. So where, where would this go? Has staff looked into maybe figuring out where this goes, or no? Okay. Those aren't my residents to ask, but you can ask them. So maybe, have you guys thought about it?
No land there. It's awful.
Because we, as you guys know, when we have these zoning issues for duplexes or homes in neighborhoods or close to neighborhoods, we have residents who come out concerned. And so this would be a major concern, you know, because, like, I don't know, somebody talked about security and all those kinds of things. We have to hire our own security. We already have a shortage of police officers, so how are we going to secure this? And so I guess, have you guys thought about location, or?
We have not. We were waiting for direction from the council before staff put, put a significant amount of time into doing research.
Yeah.
But we're glad to do it.
Thank you. So, like I said once, I would not support this for those reasons, but I'm here to hear the motion.
So, thank you, Councilmember Davis. Before I go to Councilmember McNair, being the chair, I have a few questions. So, Ben, you had said, when Councilmember Thompson asked about the pallet that had a bathroom in it, you said that would run about $45,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So is that the kit, or is that put together?
That is, that is the kit, that is the kit. Assembly for those units typically starts around, depending on the number you're purchasing, et cetera, typically starts around $1,000 to $1,500. You know, obviously, if you're ordering a single one, I think we'd have to calculate some sort of special pricing on that to fly our staff out. But yeah, the biggest concerns after, after the actual product.
Okay.
In the, is the site prep, installation, and shipping.
Okay. So, so this $45,000 per unit, that is just the kit? Is that transportation?
It does not include transportation.
Okay. So that does not include transportation. It doesn't include this stall, install. It doesn't include the infrastructure. It doesn't include electricity, and it doesn't include plumbing. So by the time we put those numbers down, I'm looking at about another $40,000. And, and it is, and how big is it?
That's 120 square foot.
120 square feet. It's, it's a 10 by 12 home. So we are looking, and I'm just like coming off the top of my head. Now, what I will say, from my experience, because I have been in this business, you have to have 24-hour people there. You have to. And the question is, if it doesn't happen, then it's us. And we have to find somebody to put these houses together, to do everything. So it becomes our responsibility. But what I'm understanding is, like Catholic charities, most of, are any cities doing this? That they do it from the beginning to the end?
That there, I don't know of any cities that take on the full financial and management side of this. I would definitely have to look into that. Typically, there would be, like I said, most often, it's a nonprofit and city partnership for the owner and operators of the site.
So I, I am going to, you know, I know that we do have a challenge, and we do have to address it. And I'm going to agree with my colleague, Councilmember Honduras, that it does seem like the perfect fit to start with the county, just because of the DSS services and everything, because we have a hard time with our day resource center getting resources there. But if you do the numbers, we're looking about $85,000 per unit. That's 120 square feet. We, we just went in, and then, and a, and the regency had to be shut down because it was unsafe. And I'm sure those rooms were probably about, maybe 200 square feet, 300 square feet, probably 400 square feet. So do, do we, do we find something like a regency and go in and spend where it's brick and mortar? So that, that, that's just all I have to say. But I appreciate everybody's hard work in all of this. So I'm going to go to Councilmember McNair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to say, the mayor and I, we had a meeting on this morning about the pallet. However, we both agreed that these, this community would act as a crisis center. And also, I, especially with what's coming down the pipes, I do believe, well, I'm not going to speak on that right now too, too quickly, but there's some things coming down the pipe that would mandate that we have something in place. But however, I sent out you guys an email earlier today with some goals, and I would like for us, Kelly, to read those off to us, please.
Okay. And this was emailed to, to all of council earlier today. So it says, today the Homelessness and Mental Health Committee will be seeking your support on a pallet village that can be a meaningful initiative aimed at providing affordable housing, community spaces, or transitional living environments. Here are some goals that we consider promoting to support a pallet village in Fayetteville after the presentation to council today. There are five short-term goals that include community engagement, an awareness campaign, partnership development, site assessment, and funding acquisition. There are four midterm goals that are around design and planning, and collaborating with architects and urban planners, policy advocacy to work with city officials and local legislators to advocate for policies that permit and support this type of village, sustainability initiatives to incorporate green building practices, and programming development to include the focus on community building, job training, and mental health support. Then there are five long-term goals that include community integration, evaluation and feedback, scalability, long-term funding and sustainability, and advocacy for broader housing solutions. And again, you, you have that in an email also.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, to have staff to take a look at this pallet program and bring back how we can move forward, or if we need to move to something different.
Okay. So I have two more people. I have Banks, Councilmember Banks McLachlan, and Councilmember Green, and then Councilmember here for discussion. Would you like, can we have discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Banks McLachlan.
Yes. Thank you, Ben, for the presentation. I too serve on a homeless and mental health committee, but I was going to see if, depending on how this vote, if it passed or not, I was going to recommend that we take it to the city-county liaison, where you both have the city and the county, as well as, you know, if we talk about collaboration and working with nonprofits, I think that'd be a great thing to do. But again, that's depending on how this vote goes. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Councilmember Banks McLachlan, because that was very similar to what I was going to comment on. We don't, I don't think we know exactly what the county intends to do with the property that we rezoned for them, where they were originally going to do the pod type. I think that's in a hold process. I'm not 100% certain, but I think they've kind of got it on hold. To me, that should be addressed and looked at as a location, as well as the county taking the lead on this. I agree with Councilmember Honduras and Mayor Protem as well on those. So I'm not opposed to staff moving, you know, researching and coming back to us. But I would hope, as part of that, that they would seek out the county's information and input on this as well.
But are we asking for that to be put in the motion, or do we want to go ahead and, yes, that's what I'm asking. Or would you like us to go ahead and vote, and then?
So, so hopefully.
Yeah, we just want you to come back. If not, we have to move towards something different, anyway.
I agree with that. I agree with that last sentence. Okay. Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I agree, for one thing, thanks, Chairman and the committee. I mean, I like what I'm hearing about this. I think it's, it's a big plus of what we can do to help with homeless. I do also think that we need some additional, some additional information, because one of my thoughts is, I would like to receive information from some of the cities that were on the list, and just see how it's working with them, you know, talk to them. And I know that's a part, I think that's a part of the motion, the request, of the information that's going to come back, along with, I mean, just the whole, the whole thing of how it works, and, and, you know, with the security and the costs. And we would like to, of course, we want to see which way it's going to go. And so I think there's a number of things there that we have questions that we would like to receive back. So I guess I could support them coming back with the information.
So before I go to Councilmember Benevente, you wanted to speak again? Is that correct? Okay. So before I go to Councilmember Benevente, just so I am, I am clear, I heard Councilmember McNair say, if we don't go with this, we want to research something else. Is that correct? Okay.
And with a detailed report on how this can be implemented.
For, for this?
The pallet.
The pallets. Okay.
Yes. Yes, I do want to say, too, I had the privilege to visit several of the sites, and they were very well-maintained. And you could, you could not even tell that it was a temporary shelter.
Well, we need to get ahold of those people that are running it.
Yeah, it was very well-maintained.
Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I think we got a lot of great information, and it was already very clear, I thought, that there would be, from, from City Manager's comments, that he would need to look into building code inspection, that compliance, and that we would, that would deadlead us to finding out what additional costs may be associated to make sure we're in compliance. I think that to move forward with anything like this, scaling it, you know, doing something, you know, on a reasonable level, if it's just five, if it's just 10, and then, you know, connecting with the county even on that initial investment, and then if it wants, if it's a success to grow from that point. I think all of those things are good practices, best practices, that we always engage in. So I guess I just didn't want us to feel like there was all these little mic drop moments when this Dr. Newton, when Dr. Newton said how expensive it could potentially be. Those are what we're asking the staff to look into before we do anything. So, you know, we don't need to freak out right now if we haven't even gotten a base level of information of what we need to worry about. And so, you know, I appreciate how careful and how considerate everyone is being about all these potential issues. I, you know, I'm always curious about where this level of concern is when it comes to the conversation. when it comes to the conversations around the curfew, that you guys wanna measure twice, three times, five times, before we do anything. This is a great, you know, attitude to take towards this. I hope that you guys kind of remember this level of concern in all the things that we vote on.
All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Thompson? I'm sorry, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My colleague had a good point till he got to his ending, but.
It's still true.
Let me just say that. I want, uh, I think this is very admirable, what we're doing. I think this is a need in our community. But what I don't agree with is the motion of moving forward with the pallet program. According to my colleague, who's in real estate, if, well, consensus, if the price is six hundred and fifty dollars per square feet for a seventy-square-foot home, when the average new construction is two hundred dollars per square feet for a two-thousand-dollar, for, for a two-thousand-square-foot home, and we wanna talk about being good stewards of citizens' money? We need to rethink what we're doing and make sure that we do what's best for our entire community, not just one demographic. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Anyway, anybody else? Okay, this should, uh.
I wanna make sure I'm understanding what Councilmember, uh, Thompson just said. And Councilwoman McNair, did you say a, a pallet program? Or did she just say information? No, this is just information coming back to us.
I thought the information that she, the motion that she made was for the information for the pallet.
Yes.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Not just information, she said information for the pallet.
And, and explain, what do you?
The pallet means that we just went over the prices. The prices for the pallets are six hundred and sixty-six dollars per square foot.
Right, right, I got that. But I, I was thinking that she was coming, they were gonna come back with questions. Shoot, I asked four or five, two or three right here, four or five over there. So, they were questions, I thought, uh, my friend that was being asked, not us coming back.
Well, let me tell you what I would agree with.
I just emailed you my goals, our goals, yes.
If we were to come back with information, and then put out a RFP on what would be the best solution for what we're trying to find that was comparable to a price that we can all agree to, I would be fine. But for this right here, there's no way.
Yeah. And, and I do agree, Mayor Protem, that everyone, I mean, the, the, the square-footage cost is, is quite a bit for such a small place compared, what is it? Two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, for a regular-sized standard house? I mean, they so close together, come on. So, you know, I do have an issue with that, but I was just looking for information, I thought, but, I'm.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Hare. I'm, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Davis and then Councilmember Benevente.
Can we just have the motion restated, please?
Councilmember Hare, I mean, McNair?
Well, oh, okay. Um, the, uh, motion stated that I wanted to, the committee wanted to have staff to come back with the goals that I emailed all of you earlier today. And, and that email has the answer to every one of your questions.
So, we need to state that in a motion, that it's not, the motion isn't, I want to pass what the email was? So, let's, let's.
She, she read it a few minutes ago. Did you, you hear it?
Can we have a motion that long? Okay.
Is it possible to act, to restate the motion so that staff knows what staff will be doing?
Yeah, yeah, staff will be coming back with the information in the email that was, um, emailed earlier today to everyone, uh, the councilmembers and City Manager and Mayor, have the information. You want it read again?
It will need to be read into the record, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kelly, can you do that?
Okay, short-term goals are community engagement and awareness campaign, partnership development, site assessment. Oh, would the, read all of it? Yes, sir. Okay, short-term goals, community engagement, organize community meetings to gather input and support from residents about the pallet vill- village initiative. Number two is awareness campaign. Launch an awareness campaign to educate the public on the benefits of a pallet village, focusing on affordable housing, sustainability, and community resilience. Number three, partnership development. Establish partnerships with local nonprofits, businesses, and organizations that can provide resources, funding, or support for the pallet village project. Number four, site assessment. Conduct a thorough assessment of potential sites for the pallet village, considering zoning laws, accessibility, and proximity to services. Number five, funding acquisition. Identify and apply for grants, donations, and sponsorships from local businesses and foundations to secure funding for the project. The midterm goals. Number six, design and planning. Collaborate with architects and urban planners to create a sustainable and community-oriented design for the pallet village. Number seven, policy advocacy. Work with city officials and local legislators to advocate for policies and permits that support the development of the pallet village. Number eight, sustainability initiatives. Incorporate green building practices and renewable energy sources in the design of the pallet village. Number nine, programming development. Develop programs for residents that focus on community building, job training, mental health support, and other essential services. And then the long-term goals. Number ten, community integration. Foster integration of the pallet village with the surrounding community through events, services, and programs that engage both residents of the village and the broader community. Um, number eleven, evaluation and feedback. Establish metrics to evaluate the success of the pallet village and solicit ongoing feedback from residents and stakeholders to improve the project continuously. Number twelve, scalability. Explore opportunities to replicate the pallet village model in other areas of Fayetteville or nearby communities as needed. Number thirteen, long-term funding and sustainability. Create a plan for sustainable funding to maintain and operate the pallet village in the long run, involving resident participation in management. And the last one, number fourteen, advocacy for broader housing solutions. Once established, use the success of the pallet village as a case study to advocate for broader housing solutions and policies within Fayetteville and beyond.
Okay, that was fourteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Fourteen things, fourteen items? Okay, is that, that, that your motion? Okay, Councilmember, okay, um, okay, before, are you seconded?
I'm still seconding it, but I think there's necessary commentary based on that change.
So, I have couns- Okay, everybody good? You good, Councilmember? Okay, you wanna call for the vote?
So, that, that motion was very different from the original one. Because it was so different.
I have discussion on that motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so, some dollar figures were stated that I think we should recognize are under very specific, specific circumstances, that as of right now, we have not gotten to that point. We have not said that we're going to outfit it with the, all the bells and whistles that make it potentially over six hundred dollars a square foot. So, we don't need to sort of, um, you know, prejudice the jury, if you will, with things that just aren't currently the case. We are asking for city staff to look into what the cost would be to adhere to building codes. We're asking staff to look into what is financially feasible for the city right now. And when we go and take it to the county and to look for nonprofit partners, who's to say that they won't contribute to that cost? That'll bring the dollar foot, dollar figure per square foot down. So, I just want us to be thoughtful about the things that we're saying, make sure that they're accurate, and that we're not asking our colleagues to make decisions based on wild assumptions, that we're going to do it this way, and that's the only way to do it, and thus it's out, out, out of our price range. That's just not true. And the reason that pallet cities and, and these sort of novel ideas are being presented, as opposed to just build more single-family housing, um, work on, um, turning motels into transitional housing, we're doing all these things simultaneously. At no point did we say we're only going about addressing the affordable housing crisis in one way, or, as it was just stated previously by my colleague to my left, that we're doing it at the expense of other communities, or at the expense of other means of doing that. We're not addressing homelessness at the expense of affordable housing. We're attacking this from multiple angles, all the time, always. So, let's not use and pit our most vulnerable against the middle class. That's, that's not the, that's not the issue before us today. We need to look into all these options simultaneously, um, because right now, we don't have an answer to these homelessness issues. I appreciate Councilmember McNair for being bold on this, because it's really easy to say, "No, no, no," um, when it's people that we don't think are going to be organized enough to vote for us. When I hear that you're worried about people saying, "Not in my backyard," I get it. I see where the bread is buttered for so many people, you know, around this room. You guys do not believe that certain people can organize and vote.
Okay, let's wrap it up, Councilmember. Let's wrap it up.
Well, it, it has to be stated plainly, because, you know, too often, my constituents ask me, "Speak truth to power." And that is the truth, is that too many people around this room are worried about whether the, uh, they're gonna get their endorsement from the Realtors Association, or if you're gonna get in trouble with the homeowners associations.
Let's, that.
This is, this is obvious to everybody.
Councilmember Benevente, please, to, to the, thank, thank you.
It's obvious.
All right, let's call. Let's call, let's get the vote. All right, that failed, um, six to two. Oh, I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, six to three. Thank you. Ready to move on? Okay, Councilmember Banks McLachlan?
Um, I move that we take, okay, um, thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I move that we take this to the city-county liaison meeting. I move that we take this item to the city-county liaison to see if we can get buy-in.
All right, do I get a sec? Got a second through Councilmember Hare? I had Councilmember Hare and then you, Councilmember Benevente. Did you have a question?
Well, not, this is, not now, because I, I, I appreciate the motion that my colleague.
Okay.
Here just made, so I'm gonna support that, then we can go from there. This item still has life.
Councilmember Benevente?
Councilmember Banks McLachlan, if we go to the county and they ask us basic logistical questions, like, "How does this comport with building code enforcement? What sort of nonprofits have you reached out to?" All the things that Councilwoman McNair just asked our city staff to prepare. When we go to the county and they ask us those basic questions, how do you suppose that we answer them?
And do a presentation, so that can be added in the motion.
So.
But I think before, I mean, because the first motion, it just died, so we're not doing anything about it. So, I think our next goal should be bringing it to the county to get buy-in, because that is something that they focus on, is homelessness.
So, the way that you can get buy-in, I think, effectively, is to create some kind of base level of information, 'cause the first question they ask us is, "How does this comport to current building codes? What sort of, um, you know, zoning needs to happen? What, what sort of costs are associated with?" Like, those are basic questions that Brenda was just asking us to prepare so that we could look like we could even build a case to the county.
So, Councilmember Benevente.
It's for, that's what staff is for.
So, that's what her request was.
The motion is on the floor.
So, how can you guys be so supportive of going to the county?
I call for the vote, I mean, I'm trying to keep this moving.
The motion is on the floor. Let's vote. But, call for the vote.
Motion has been called and questioned, that's both guys.
All right, that passed unanimously. Our next item is Fire Station Six Project Delivery Approach. All right, everybody, please pay attention. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of council. My name is Blair, Blair Hinkle with Freeza Nichols. Uh, and just as a quick reminder, uh, it's nice to see you again. The city contracted with Freeza Nichols recently to help manage your facilities capital program. And, uh, that's generally, uh, projects that are, uh, delivered through the Construction and Management Division. And I'm glad to be here today to report that Fire Station Sixteen is making good progress and is around thirty percent designed, as we speak. Uh, and so, we've reached a point in that project lifecycle where a decision needs to be made about how that project is delivered, uh, and, and how we're gonna approach that project delivery, whether that's construction manager at risk, or whether that's design bid build or low bid. We're also excited to have our first owner's advisor. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, fortunately, the slides have not started yet, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, we're also excited today to have our first owner's advisor, uh, in Coming Group under contract to assist on this project. Uh, so, just wanted to take a few minutes today to introduce Brian Roof with Coming Group, uh, to let him share some information about his role and Coming Group's role as owner's advisor on the Fire Station Sixteen project, uh, and then ultimately to bring the project team's recommendation on the delivery method for Fire Station Sixteen. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Brian. Thank you, Blair. Good afternoon, council. We're excited to be here this afternoon. So, for today's agenda item, um, I'll have just a brief introduction on myself, Coming Group, the project delivery methods, construction manager at risk, and design bid build. And then, as Blair mentioned, our Fire Station Sixteen recommendation. I'm Brian Roof, Vice President with Coming Group. I lead our southeast region, uh, here in North Carolina. I serve as a project executive for our team. Uh, Coming Group is an international project management and cost management company. Uh, we began in the early nineteen six, or, excuse me, nineteen nineties, nineteen ninety-six, to be exact. Uh, we've now have over twenty-five-hundred members, um, globally, with sixty offices, um, across, uh, the US, the UK, and other areas. What we're excited about is, um, collectively, we've managed and brought to market over three-hundred-billion dollars worth of projects globally. But more specifically here in the Carolinas, we've got over sixty-three team members, and that includes project management, cost management, schedule, risk mitigation, uh, a healthy, a healthy team, uh, located here, uh, locally. Additionally, Coming has, uh, delivered well over twenty projects, municipal projects, in the Carolinas as well. I want to take a moment just to talk on the owner advisory services, it's just a brief summary to level set. So, an owner advisor and an owner's project management representative are two different roles. The function on the left-hand side of your screen here, and we've highlighted a few things, 'cause there's a lot of text, I just wanted to call your attention to. The function of an owner's advisor is to really provide that strategic guidance to your team. Whereas, the function for an owner's project manager is truly to manage the day-to-day aspects of the project, and be responsible for the delivery of that project. Our role as an owner's advisor is to serve as consultant, whereas an owner's project manager, uh, serves as that integrated member of the owner's team. The scope for, for Coming Group as an owner advisor is to support the process for planning, procurement, and project delivery. Our decision authority is really only advisory in nature. And then, our typical task on an owner advisory role is to advise on the project delivery methods, which we're here to discuss today, to evaluate proposals from your general contractors, from your sub-trades, and to give you great depth of feedback on those types of qualifications and proposals. And then to provide process and structure for the project team to execute the project efficiently. That differs from an owner's project manager, who's empowered to make decisions. They're responsible for the day-to-day management of the project, and their typical tasks look like issuing project reports, um, coming back to city council, coordinating stakeholders, and effectively delivering the overall project. Visually, a project structure, typical project structure looks just like the tiles on the left-hand side. Uh, it represents, uh, the organizational structure, where, uh, you have the city project manager for the project, and that doesn't change. They're responsible for managing the design team and the contracting team. With an owner advisor such as Coming Group, we come in and we encapsulate that project. So, that's that circle around the entire team. We help your project team set up the appropriate processes. We help your project team set up the appropriate processes, and the project controls, and that's a really big emphasis that I want to highlight, setting up project controls for the project. This supports and helps the team be efficient, effective, and proactive. It's forward-looking, and helps head off issues before they become problems. So, that's what we're doing here at Coming Group, serving as your owner advisor, and as Blair just mentioned, Freeza Nichols, on the capital program, at a much higher level with the city. So let's talk a little bit about project delivery methods, specific to Fire Station 16. Beginning at a high level, there's a lot of criteria to consider when deciding what type of contracting, construction contracting method to use. There's elements where you want to look at with design control, cost, schedule, the project team itself, understanding some of the risks and complexities of that particular project, and then some other drivers. Some of the call-outs that we've highlighted on the screen, during design, and I would argue, I would also emphasize during construction, a key criteria for this project is really the quality and the value that we need to focus on. Additionally, the cost certainty and cost transparency, both during design and construction, is keenly important. The project team, understanding the availability of qualified partners, that's not just your general contracting base, that's the subcontractor market as well. And participation, and the participants' expertise in these areas, we want to find those kind of partners who have built fire stations before, they have experience with that particular type of facility, and the uniqueness of it. And then, of course, the known risk, the perceived risk, as it relates to risk mitigation and planning. Again, that's that being very proactive nature. And then, the last thing that I highlighted here is the other key driver, is the marketplace participation. How do we incentivize subcontractors, vendors to participate? How do you get it competitive, and want those individuals pursuing your project, compared to all the others that are in the marketplace, vying for their services? So those are all key drivers, when thinking about how to deliver a project, and what type of construction contract you want to utilize. For today's purposes, we looked at two delivery methods, design, bid, build, also called lump sum. A key aspect, and so, the way this particular sheet is set up, is you have the design bid build, project delivery method on the left, along with construction manager at risk. Those were the two that we looked at. And then, the benefits and risk for both. What I'd like to call your attention to specifically, is, for design bid build, the award is often made to the contractor with the lowest total cost. That includes their general conditions, their general requirements, all of their subcontractor and vendor bids. Whoever can do that and package it at the lowest value, usually wins those types of pursuits. The benefits of design bid build, the contract is pretty straightforward to develop. It places delivery responsibility on the contractor, based on very clear plans and specifications. Whatever is in those documents is what they own, and nothing more, nothing less. Another aspect that's a benefit is, it usually focuses, like we talked about, on a competitive landscape that's lowest cost. Some of the risk for design bid build, is it does not focus on the best qualified general contractor, it does not focus on the best qualified subcontractor base. Another one we highlighted, one that call out, it does not, there's no involvement from your construction team, the general contractor, during your design and pre-construction phase of the project, which can be very valuable. Construction manager at risk, the bottom portion of our table here, that cost, GMP, which is a guaranteed maximum price limit, is set for the project, and that cost includes any scope that could be reasonably inferred from the plans and specifications. So there's a distinction there, reasonably inferred in a construction manager at risk versus a clearly defined design bid build, plans and specs. Benefits for your CM at risk include early engagement with the contractor, to participate and provide guidance on design, you set a target budget, and the team's obligation is to design to that budget. The contractor helps them. It helps our design team, it helps our owner team understand, what can we do in areas to have better value? Also, there's cost certainty and cost transparency. As you go through the design phase, at certain milestones, schematic design, contract, design development, they provide a cost estimate, and that helps our team understand, how are we trending on cost during, as we go through design, and then we can move it back into shape. Some of the challenges or risks, is that, on occasion, the contractors can try to utilize or exercise allowances, contingency items, in lieu of appropriately planning and coordinating the work. So that's some of the risk and gaps that we see sometimes in our industry, that need to be managed well. Our next slide here is busy, it's got a lot of information. This includes multiple delivery methods, including alternative delivery methods, to the right-hand side of our sheet, in red. We've muted those in color, because we're not considering those design build partnerships, integrated project delivery. We're focused on the traditional delivery methods, on the left-hand side of our page. Design bid build at the top, CM at risk. The first few rows, structure, approach, and execution, we talked a little bit about. I won't take any more time to, unless there's questions on those. Really, what I wanted to look at is the bottom-left quadrant of this table. The initial cost for a CM at risk is usually slightly higher than the design bid build. However, the budget control is a really important next item that's on this sheet, and it's called out for a reason. You can see, four of those circles are highlighted compared to the two. The ability at CM at risk to control the budget during design, when you still have a chance to affect the cost, is much more significant than when the design's already done, and you're bidding it. So the budget control can oftentimes offset the initial cost, where you have the pre-construction value for the contractor to participate during pre-construction. Speed to delivery, while not a huge emphasis on this particular project, is a little better with CM at risk. And the last two items, transparency and design flexibility, are significant and are appropriate to this project, in terms of being a little bit more beneficial with the CM at risk model, compared to the design bid build. How this model looks in typical process. In the middle here, you'll see the typical phases of a project, beginning with bond, land acquisition. The green phases there are all design phases. So you begin with your concept design, schematic design, design development, construction. That's all the progression from your architects and engineers, building the design, and becoming more specific, and more detailed with it. And then finally, you get to the construction phase.
One second, sir. Council, this is, this morning, we sat through this presentation, and based on feedback from the team, we added this slide, but we did not update it in your presentation package.
Thank you. Yep, so hopefully, you can see it on the screen there. If you have any questions, we're happy to elaborate further. But what we wanted to really call attention to was, how does this process work? So in the gray box on the top, that's design bid build. You'll see on there, your architecture engineers, your stakeholders, from the city's team, are all involved from the beginning, and the contractors bid the final design, when it's all complete, that's when they come in, and they're brought into the project. And it's usually, in that scenario, the load bid wins. That's right at the end of construction documents, before the construction phase starts. With construction manager at risk, the bottom gray section, your contractors go through an RFQ process, request for qualifications. All of those general contractors who can compete and bid for the project, if you do design bid build, are eligible to respond to an RFQ. At that point in time, that's done usually during the concept phase of a project, and you award the project based on who's best qualified. At that point in time, your contracting partner joins the design phase, and they're involved, then, for all of those green sections, which are usually multiple months, and they help your design team understand what's valuable. Can we look at the exterior envelope? Can we look at the skin? Can we look at a mechanical system? Can we do something that adds value, maybe reduces costs, and gives you the same design intent? During construction development, the GMP is set, that's the guaranteed maximum price. They set that before they go and bid. So they say, "This project will cost this amount of money, and we enter into a contract to deliver that, at a fixed cost, at a fixed time." That's the GMP. And at that point, then, bid packages can begin to be assembled, and put out to the subcontracting market, so that now, we're getting subcontractor involvement, subcontractor participation, and again, that's an open book process. That's different than design bid build. The contractor buys the whole project at a certain dollar, and whatever's in there for their subs, they guarantee that they provide the project to those specifications. In this scenario, it's an open book bid process with subcontractors.
Say that whole part there again about...
Sure.
The contractor bid final, and the suburbs are in there, that's what the suburbs get.
That's right.
That's definitely part of that. Say all of that again.
Sure. So in a typical design bid build scenario, the design documents, specifications, and drawings are all done, they go out to the marketplace, general contractors will reach out to their subs, and their vendors and suppliers, and they'll say, "Okay, we can do this project for X amount of dollars." A million dollars, 10 million, 100 million dollars, and they say, "We're buying the project for that amount." You don't get to see the details of that. They just go, "This is it." And if I can do it for $10, and somebody else can do it for $9, usually the person for $9 wins. In the construction manager at risk, you bring on your partner earlier, you do it based on their qualifications, who's best qualified to be your general contractor, and then, as the design develops, they work with your stakeholders, your team, and the designers, to put together bid packages that go out to the market. So we'll look for a mechanical contractor.
Thank you. So, and I do appreciate that, especially the contractor bid part, but is there any changes financially, which I think I know the answer, but when we start looking at the suburbs, and work order changes come in, what may be some deviation, or whatever that happens within that process? Is somebody eating that cost, or is there some additional costs being said to the city?
Sure, great question. So the GM, the construction manager at risk and the GMP, I'm going to go back to this statement, because it's really kind of important. Construction manager at risk, on the left-hand side, that's gray in that bottom section, the cost includes any scope that's reasonably inferred from the plans or specs. So, and then, at the top, design bid build, can you see it up there? Okay. This is based on, this award is based on defined, completed, design documents, plans and specs. So what that means is, I'll give you an example.
Fixed price.
Fixed price. I'll give you an example. If there is a door specification in the spec book, but there's no door shown on the plans, in a design bid build, your contractor can say, "I bought this. I bought the specification in the specs, to the quantity shown on the plans, which is zero. So you have to pay me for a door." In a CM at risk model, we could say, "It's reasonably inferred, because the specifications have a door requirement shown in there, and a specific spec for that door. What type of door is it? What's the closer? You can reasonably infer, you owe a door. You're going to own that door within your GMP. You bought the door." So that's an example of how it can work differently. So, moving on, so, recommendations. I made some notes here. The project team, including the city's construction group, the project manager, the city stakeholders, design team met to review these delivery methods. The team is recommending to proceed with construction manager at risk method. This ensures the city selects the general contractor that's best qualified for the project, not just the lowest price. It allows the contractor to provide the value and cost influence during the design phase. It ensures the contractor sets a guaranteed maximum price, assuming some of the risk for delivery, and full transparency throughout the process. And it allows for an open book bidding for the subcontracting market, and the trade market. This also usually enhances the participation from local and WNBE partners as well. When these packages can be designed in such a way, with your influence and guidance, along with the design teams, they're able to put packages together that maybe smaller contractor, or subcontractors and vendors can now compete on, that wouldn't otherwise be there, in a lump sum, design bid build scenario. So that's the recommendation from the team. I understand the options are to authorize staff to use CM at risk delivery method for the fire station, or to authorize staff, and, I'm sorry, do not authorize staff to use CM at risk, and provide further guidance.
All right, thank you. So we have quite a long list going on right here. So it starts with Councilmember Thompson, then, Councilmember Hare, you've already gone, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Hondros, and then Benevente, and then Hare. Did I not have you?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Brian?
Thanks for the presentation. We have a reason. I have to go, you guys, no? So the city hires some? So, tell me, which is a better, owner advisor or owner PM representative? So there, sorry, Blair, no. Make sure the mic is on.
I muted everybody.
Okay. So it really is not too different, it's not one or the other, they're not mutually exclusive. So...
Let me ask my other partner a question. Isn't it more important to be the owner PM representative, because that way, you have more input into what's being taken place? Because you talked about designs, you talk about budget. We want to talk about, well, let me rephrase that. I want to talk about brick and mortar. You guys play an important part in making sure that our first responders have a building that's safe for them. We need to make sure that you guys, make sure the contractors do what they're supposed to do, so that way, we're not faulted in any of our construction.
If I may, excuse me. Councilman Thompson, council had given us direction to have both of these for our project, so the interest was that we have an owner's advisor or owner's agent, as well as external project management, and then we have city staff on the projects as well.
So we have all three.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and one thing I would add, is that, when you see the city project manager, so that is city staff, that's a project manager that exists today in the city organization, and as program manager, Freeza Nichols is there to support them, and to help bolster that staff. So, you can sort of think of Freeza Nichols' role as program-wide, helping to bolster staff, helping to get processes and procedures in place, so that we're able to do things like hire really talented owner's advisors, to help us on specific projects.
I just wanted to make sure we was clear. Per the conversation we had about three weeks ago, when I asked you that question, I just want to make sure that we're doing things procedurally right, to make sure that we're protecting our first responders at all costs. So they pretty much answered my question. So thank you, Mr. Brian, and thank you for the presentation. And I move that we accept CMR for our projects.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I had Councilmember Davis, it's his district, so we're going to wait, but we have more questions before we do that. So, I'll come back to you, I'll come back to you two. Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, gentlemen. Question, can anybody tell me approximately the square footage of Firehouse 4?
I don't have that information at hand.
12,000, okay. So this, Firehouse 16, we're talking about 10,500 feet? So it's going to be obviously a different design, right? Do we know yet if this is going to be a pre-engineered steel building, and/or have architectural add-ons similar to 4?
It likely will not. We're at 30% design, and so, as the design progresses, some of those details will come out, but it will be a design that's constructable and successful.
Okay.
It mirrors Fire Station 12 on Hope Mills Road.
Okay. Thank you.
City manager, did you want to jump in?
No, I think our recommendation or request is that you would approve CMR for 16, and this same level of evaluation that we are doing here, we would do for all of our future projects, construction projects. There are some projects that we may want to try a different delivery method. This is, hold on, chief, if you could. No, I was coming, stay back over here for a second. You didn't ask the question, but I do want, before you make the motion, I mean, take the vote, the motion is, we heard council, our last CMR was Segway Stadium, the, our only, I think, I think that we may have used some of these projects. We've, Sheila and her team are here, we have some engineers that she has brought on, on city staff, who have an extensive knowledge using CMR, something that we, I've been somewhat hesitant to do, because I remember, it's probably one of the only members, except for Mayor Protem now, who was around the table, when we were out there at 11 o'clock at night, slinging asphalt, to try to get a TCO to open up the stadium, because if we didn't, we had to pay damages to the ast-... had to pay damages to the Astros. So it was, and then, so it's some concerns. I want to thank you all for the patience of answering all the questions. And the other, Councilman here, we thought we were going to be, and I think it may have been addressed this to you as well, that once we get our contractor on, the bid packages will be open. Could you, did you speak to that a little bit more about what that means for?
My follow-up.
Yes, I just, because we anticipated that this morning. I don't know if you heard some of that, that we were there. I don't want, I want to make sure that's in the record so that you can hold us accountable for that.
Sure. So I'm happy to just discuss briefly the bid packages. As design progresses in the C M at risk model, we'll do a couple of things. We'll look at, to find out what are the early release items that have to be bought early because of procurement timeframes. They have gotten better throughout the industry, but oftentimes, switchgear, electrical components, those have a very long lead time. So as design progresses, we'll begin to put together bid packages that go out to the subcontracting market. And those team members respond back to your general contractor. And we have a public bid opening. And so we look to find out what electrical contractor A will propose for this project, what contractor B will propose, what contractor C will propose. And in a similar fashion, we also look at their qualifications. Are they qualified to do this type of project in addition to their cost? And so at the conclusion of that effort, the team, led by a recommendation from your contractor, makes the selection on who's going to do the electrical work.
And if I can jump on this, Kim, could you come up real quickly as well? As she's doing it, tell her what I'm asking her for. With the hub, and I know some of this stuff as well, Dr. Here, you had asked about, see, we know you pretty well. And so, you're going to ask her, but I want to, I'm going to set it up so you can ask the question and we can frame it, is that with the hub, if we know you're talking about electrical package, sir, then, Kim, what would we be able to do in advance with the hub? And, and Mr., before, Dr. Here, could you ask your question so that Kim can fill in the blanks?
If Councilmember Benevente will let you go, is that okay with you?
Pretty please.
And thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Councilman, for letting me just, but yes, one of my number one, as everyone on the diocese here, is always about our small contractor, our small minority contractor support. I'm big on that. And I will continue to stand on that. We want the highest percentage that we can get. So that's number one, that we have that support. And whatever other support that we would need from the hub in doing this at Midtown, you follow me? Okay. So my other question is, because we've had some concerns in the past about folk getting paid or getting paid a little ahead of time, or whatever the case may be, if I understood correctly, with all of the bullets that you stated, the three managers that you stated, that before anyone is paid, everything will be inspected, checked off, and thumbs up, at least back in the earlier days, we used to get a green sticker. So get a green sticker that has been approved, and we move forward. That's how we're set up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Here. Councilmember Benevente.
Since we moved to previous question, vote on this.
Oh, oh, he's asking another question. Yes. Okay. So am I going to get a motion from you?
Repeal my motion and let the city councilmen go ahead and, for this district, make the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you. At the time I move that we authorize staff to use the, use C M R in the delivery of the Fire Station 16 project and to proceed with procurement of a C M R for the project.
And that's second from Councilmember Thompson. Okay, let's vote. Thank you for your presentation. All right, that's unanimous. Now, let's move to 6.03. Yes.
From all of our projects, major projects, is there a certain dollar amount that we should be expecting this? I hope we expect it for everything, but is that the answer?
What we're planning to do is, we have a slate of projects, everything. You already have this lined up for 911 station, and for, unless I hear differently from staff, for every project who we move for, a construction project of this magnitude, we will come back to you. And my hope is that, as you're approving the C I P items and things like that, we would give some thought to how we're going to deliver those projects as well. But the simple answer is yes. That's, that when we're identifying the projects, we'd also like to identify delivery method.
And because, and I'm thinking about some things of the past, that's still recent and on the front burner. So is this to be with, only with C M R? Or do we be taking bids for the same process of different companies as we go forward? Just a question.
Well, for me, my thought would be that for the construction advisor for Cummings Group, for the big projects, we would be looking to them to help us identify what be best delivery method. Councilmember Green, several months ago, had indicated for Fire Station 4 that some locals had decided not to build on Fire Station 4 because they were worried that they would not be the lowest bidder. And we need to evaluate that on each one of our projects. But your question was, would this be something that we would be bringing to council for your concurrence? And the answer is yes.
And they're going to be responsible that our little contractors get paid.
Well, I.
Okay, okay. I won't go any further.
Okay, we're at 4:15. Let's, number three.
But it's also important.
Yes, yes, yes.
But I've got to, I've just gotten word that I've got to return to D S S Court. And if I can make a brief comment about this next item, 6.03, it's a result of a councilmember request that I made. They're coming back with information. So if you don't mind, to my colleagues, I think a presentation is going to be done right now, clarifying the situation where one neighborhood, in particular in my district, had two things happening simultaneously. One, folks were parking in what the citizens considered a bike lane. And then, two, whether there was actual enforcement for them to be able to say they, people can't park in supposed a bike lane. Today, they're going to clarify all the above. What I'm going to ask for, you guys can do whatever staff recommends, but I would also just make a request, and I think there's going to be a couple of councilmembers that might be able to make the motion for me, although I'm glad to make the motion myself, I just need for those citizens to have a means and a method of being allowed to be considered if they decide they want to move forward to make a street in front, in their particular neighborhood, one that is purely for bicycles, or purely for running, or purely for walking, where people can't park. But a process has to be established first. So I'm just asking that city staff be directed to bring back a process where citizens can request no parking down a multi-use lane through something similar to the way we do speed bumps. So I'm sure you all know with speed bumps, if you don't have 100% of people who are living next to that speed bump say yes, then the answer is not yes. But it gives, in my opinion, opportunity for citizens to find out for sure whether their neighbors, if they really do have 100% potential agreement that this is what they want in their neighborhood. Currently, the only way for someone to get that is for a council member to make the request, and then convince six people to do it, which I think sometimes makes it difficult for maybe the other side to have their say, who might not get an opportunity to speak on it, because they don't want it to go down that way. This would give, I think, an opportunity for both sides to kind of have to communicate before it comes to, before city council, and we'll have a better idea who's for and who's against it. So, go ahead.
What I'm hearing is that you would like it to be put in the process like speed bumps.
That, yes.
I can support that.
There'd be something created. And we'll have a chance for Adam and his team to explain what that looks like. They'll have to say, they'll have to work on what that looks like. But it would mirror, I think, something similar to what we already have established.
I have the same issue in a neighborhood, too. Yeah.
And I think, then I'll leave it at that. I think you guys get the idea, just to give Adam an opportunity for his team to come up with a process that can then come back to city council for us to nitpick and go back and forth on.
Perfect. I think we're all on the same page. I'm, sorry, city manager.
Before Councilmember Benevente leaves, if that's in the form of a motion, I think we're clear. And so if that's the case, we can, you have the presentation in your folder, which was just basically information. So we can save some time if that's the motion, if there's a second, to give a separate direction.
So, Councilmember Benevente, you want to state your motion? I got a second through Davis.
I move that we direct staff to bring back a process where citizens can request no parking down a multi-use lane through something similar to the way we do speed bumps.
I got a second through Councilmember Davis. Are we, any discussion? Okay. Councilmember Hondros?
I presume we were going to get a presentation. So how do we know if we can support this or not, depending on what the presentation says or doesn't say?
Well, I think the presentation, and staff is more than willing to run through it, it was really just defining what was a bicycle lane, multi-use lane, or multi-use path. Council, basically, we can do this, but again, the recommendation or request from, I think, Councilmember Benevente, is really to say, is there an alternative that citizens can come forward and say they don't want parking in front of their neighborhoods? But it's council.
When you say in front of their neighborhood, you're talking about streetside parking in front of their houses.
Right.
If there is a bike lane. Yes.
So that spawns other questions, because in residential subdivisions, if you have a large get-together, let's say I have a graduation party at my house, residents are allowed to drive, to park streetside on the curb, as long as it don't block mailboxes or fire hydrants or driveways, right? So there's no, no parking. There's always parking on residential streets. And that's why I wanted the presentation, because my understanding is bike lanes are for main thoroughfares and secondary roads, not interior neighborhood streets.
Well, and.
Are they multi-use lanes or bicycle lanes?
Okay. Councilmember Benevente.
Just for the purpose of my motion, Mr. Hondros, I think what you're talking about
is a very relevant question, and I think is one that, once we have a presentation, perhaps more specific to this process, we can discuss how that may or may not kill the entire process and not make it for consideration, or that there perhaps be some means or method of allowing for things like that in a community where they have agreed by some massive percentage that they want this. So it may not be a question. There may be a way for them to address that. I don't disregard that concern. I just want to give Adam a chance to kind of include that as a question, as he explores a process.
So was your motion for 100%?
My motion is for Adam to tell me what's viable. And if, for what it's worth, I think that that may be necessary. But it's going to be up to Adam to tell me and everybody else.
I get it. And I know you're on a time crunch, but I just don't know how we can vote on a motion without the presentation.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Green on that.
Madam attorney, is there a way to make their presentation part of discussion, so that we don't have to vote on this right this second?
Not really, but we could certainly move it to the bottom of the agenda if that was council's interest.
I'm not sure what that would accomplish.
Well, there's, since he's going to, he has to leave.
Mm-hmm.
Because another part of this is that we need to move the amendments forward. So just, we could split the two, maybe.
I think to make it less complicating, Councilmember Benevente, if you have to go, I think, I'm willing to make the motion. I have the same issues that are going on in some of my neighborhoods so we can get the answers that Councilmember Hondros is looking for. But if he has to go and the motion has to be gone, I'm willing to bring it back up if that's sufficient for you. Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to do, we good for that? Are you calling for the vote?
Well, you've got a, you've got a motion.
Yeah, okay. Let's get rid of it and go from there. We'll see where we go. It's a work session, too. Okay.
It is.
All right. Somebody did not vote.
Councilmember McNair.
Oh, okay. All right. They passed. Next. Thank you.
They passed, but this is.
Correct, correct. Do we still want the presentation?
The motion was for Mr. Benevente, but that was not the motion to adopt the change. Can I get, do you want to be?
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brian McGill. I'm the Assistant Public Services Director of Traffic Services. Today, we're going to be bringing, for your pleasure, the bicycle lane ordinance clarifications, recommendations. The project manager for this project is John McNeil, who I'm going to turn it over to for that presentation.
All right. Thank you, Brian, and good afternoon. Like you said, my name is John McNeil, and I'm bringing forward the bicycle lane ordinance clarifications and recommendations. So we were asked to bring the bicycle lane ordinance back to council for vagueness and to return with recommendations. Basically, what you need to pick up from this slide is that a bicycle lane will have striping, signing, pavement markings, and is for the exclusive use of bicyclists. Parking is not allowed. Multi-use lane, a little more, I like to say, freedom for multi-use lane, so you can park in a multi-use lane, pedestrian, walking, recreating. Multi-use path is also called a shared use path or greenway, is normally designated for pedestrian, cyclists, or other active lifestyles. So again, a bicycle lane, no parking allowed on bicycle lanes. It will include striping, a bike symbol, bike signs, and is for the use for bicyclists. Multi-use lane includes motor vehicle, parking, walking, biking, trash collection, recreation. Multi-use path, also known as a shared use path, typically outside of the roadway and wider than sidewalk, so normally 6 to 10 foot. At the top of the screen is the current ordinance, and what we would be adding to it is on the bottom. So basically, adding that a bicycle lane is a lane in a roadway. We would also be adding the no parking part of the ordinance or obstructing the bicycle lane. You would be allowed to enter your driveway and be, you know, directed by a law enforcement officer to cross the bicycle lane. But in most situations, you would, no parking is allowed or obstructing the bicycle lane. Does have a penalty of $50 if enforced. Just want to bring to your attention that our bicycle plan was established in 2020. There's 171 recommended projects in that plan. Some of the recommendations include a shared lane, multi-use lane, and bike lane. Current funding for some of these projects, the FY25 is $340,000. That is go-bond funding. And then we've asked for $100,000 in each additional fiscal year moving forward. Basically, this slide says that we will be coming back to you, asking for matching funds for a municipal agreement for an updated bicycle plan in FY27, similar to the pedestrian plan that's happening now. We are eligible to update our plan every five years, so we'll be coming back to you to ask for those funds. Until that time and until the recommendations are updated, we'll still be utilizing our current bicycle plan. The future bicycle plan will be reviewed against the proposed changes in this ordinance. And we plan on coming back to council to update you on future, with future agenda items such as the planning, converting, removing bicycle plan projects. This update will include costs, locations, and timelines. As always, the options are to approve the cutting ordinance amendments, place them on a consent agenda for adoption, or do not approve the recommended changes and provide further direction. Staff's recommendation is option one. I'm sure we have. And we plan on coming back to council to update you on future, with future agenda items such as the planning, converting, removing bicycle plan projects. This update will include costs, locations, and timelines. As always, the, the options are to approve the cutting ordinance amendments, place them on a consent agenda for adoption, or do not approve the recommended changes and provide further direction. Staff's recommendation is option one. I'm sure we have questions.
Thank you, sir.
If we, thank you, ma'am. I have one question on the table, Councilmember Honduras, and to follow, Councilmember Thompson, and after him, Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, thank you gentlemen for the presentation. On this map you have on the screen, because we understand this between a multipurpose lane and a bike lane, but on that, you got three different bike lanes. You got a bike lane, a buffered bike lane, and a separated bike lane. Obviously, there's a difference. Is it part of the one bicycle plan, or? When we look to expand the bicycle lanes, which one are we preferring?
So inside the bike, inside the 2020 bicycle plan, there's a lot of different recommended treatments for bicycle lanes. So a bike lane would be like you're just solid white line. Buffered bike lane, maybe one to two foot wide to provide a little more separation from, from the other vehicles. Separated bike lane would be, or side path would be completely out of the traveling roadway, such as a you know, off the side of the roadway, outside of the curb and gutter.
Similar, I believe, on 401 bypass, I think, has a separated bike lane, right?
That's correct.
So on here, though, there's also in the orange, so you got the various shades of blue, light blue, dark blue, and teal was the bike lanes, then you got the multi-use lanes, which are common in neighborhoods, or is kind of like the yellow or amber color, right? But then there's a darker orange color that's a shared lane. What's the difference between a shared lane and a multi-use lane?
If I'm not mistaken, a shared lane would be, a bicycle would actually be in the travel lane with a vehicle, so you would have a symbol that says, like if your bicycle lane would run out at an intersection or through an intersection, the bicyclist would be, would have to share the lane with a vehicle. So that's just to notify the bicyclists and the, and the vehicle traffic that it will be a shared lane.
But that's every asphalt travel lane, vehicle travel lane is shared, right?
If, if you interpret the ordinance that way, that a bicycle is a vehicle, then yes. We, we can put the physical symbol in the roadway to, to notify the public that.
But even without the road, even without the symbol, a bicycle's allowed to follow traffic rules and travel in vehicle traffic lanes, correct? So my question.
We would typically place them, if you have a bicycle lane that is running out, we would typically place it at the end of that bicycle lane.
Gotcha, just as kind of a notation that the bike lanes end in.
Bike lanes end and notify the traffic that you might have bicyclists in the lanes.
So I think Dr. Newton left, I see Assistant Director Steinmetz, but I don't know if this is a question for you guys, for the director, or for the attorney. But typically, aren't dedicated bike lanes for major thoroughfares and major secondary roads, and not internal residential neighborhood streets? And the amber color kind of denotes that if you, on our tablet, we can enlarge the map, I mean, those are interior streets where there's multi-lane, multi-lanes are typically located, so are bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes even allowed or common in interior residential streets?
I wouldn't say yes. I wouldn't say there's any, any law against it one way or the other. Our, if adopted, our kind of internal policy would be, if it's a residential or subdivision street, it would be a multi-use lane. So we, like you're saying, we would just do bike lanes on the connector roadways that go from destination to destination, or large freeway, or large roadway to a large roadway.
Thank you, and Mr. McGill, maybe you can help me with this, because I remember seeing a presentation from staff, and maybe it was a pure city comparison, that basically, most ordinances, most local ordinances, at least in the state of North Carolina, that bicycle lanes, dedicated bicycle lanes were not common in interior neighborhood streets? Or am I just misremembering?
Your memory should be accurate, I'm a little fuzzy on that one, but from my recollection, that seems to be the practice across the pure cities as well.
And the reason I'm asking that, because to my council colleagues, well, the motion we just took moved forward in consensus before this presentation, there really shouldn't be any dedicated bicycle lanes in interior neighborhoods, so there shouldn't be a mechanism, it would make a mechanism to make it no parking a moot point, because they shouldn't be there. If there's any lanes in interior neighborhoods, there should be multipurpose lanes that allow parking. That, that's my challenge in understanding that.
And my understanding from Mr. Benevente is him recognizing that as well. But the interest of no parking, I think, was really the driver in that. I think what, what we want to explore is that using a bike lane is probably not the best practice for getting no parking in a residential neighborhood. A multi-use lane is probably best in a neighborhood, which is our practice. But if no parking is an interest, there's no mechanism for someone to come back and request that, similar to what we have a speed bump, so we're going to look at, see if there's a program we could mirror that might do that.
So that, you're helping me close the loop on it. So this would be more pertinent question for the attorney. In, in internal residential streets, unless there's a dedicated bike lane, isn't it allowed by right that any resident can park up and down the, the side of the road, as long as you're not on someone's grass, as long as you're not blocking fire hydrants, mailboxes, and driveways, you can park up and down the street?
I don't know if I'd say by right, but generally, yes, you can park on the public right away.
I don't know, I think this is a solution looking for a problem. Because then, if this happens, right, then you have a large get-together, Christmas, Thanksgiving, you got 30 people, they don't fit in your driveway, then they don't have a way to park. I mean, I, I don't know, it's just a solution looking for a problem to me. Thank you.
It was, uh.
Thompson?
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My question is the planned projects. How did we come up with this priority list of Winslow, Coventry, Mcgavory, and McCray? Because it looks to me that there is no possibility that anybody looked at the southwest part of Fayetteville.
All right. So Winslow, Coventry, and Mcgavory come out of the bicycle plan from the bicycle plan update 2020. McCray Drive, staff had found that that was from council direction, looking back at previous records. And so these four projects were directed whenever the GOBON was adopted.
So these are done by council members' requests, is what you're telling me?
Sheila's coming to our rescue.
Yeah, no, it's because they're part of the resurfacing program.
Well, the, the top three projects that you see, they were identified in the bicycle plan. A lot of times, we follow the resurfacing projects, because it's a lot easier to change the striping at that time, a lot more cost-effective. McCray Drive actually connected into other multi-use lanes in the area. McCray Drive was getting resurfaced, so it was, it was, it was easy to change it and install the multi-use lanes at that time. Some of the larger roadways out in the western area, like, I think Fisher Drive is coming up, and there will be a multi-use path on this. Some of the larger two-lane roadways are going to be more difficult to install the bike lanes in a quick manner, unless we piggyback from DOT on some of their larger projects.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hare.
Okay, thank you. Well, somewhat two questions. A bicycle lane is only a bicycle lane if it has the bicycle little symbol in the lane? Right?
Yep, we'll have a symbol and a sign.
Okay, so where I live, and all of my interior streets, but where I live, on my major street, I have that side painted line on both sides of my street, in front of my house and across the street from me. I don't remember seeing, believe me, I will drive through the neighborhood tonight.
I looked the other day when I came through, and I didn't see a bicycle somewhere.
Yeah, she wasn't coming from my house, so.
I was.
That was just a little funny, that was just a little funny. That was just a little funny, y'all. And so I don't remember seeing the symbol. So what do we call that?
That's a multi-use lane.
A multi-use lane. Now, let me understand. So the motion that was made early, before we heard the presentation, was that motion stated that the neighborhood, or the option was there, and I can't remember how it was worded, that if it was to become a bicycle lane, that nobody could park in there any time?
So I'm probably going to confuse this some, and I apologize that in advance. Years ago, we were looking for ways to slow down traffic in neighborhoods.
Correct.
And so the council was presented with a variety of options, and you may recall, we're going to put something on a road diet. How, when you go down, let's use real streets, anyone who's been on Hilliard Drive in Country Club North, those are exceedingly wide, exceedingly wide streets. And Westmont Drive, and so years and years ago, there was an effort to try to slow down the traffic there. And it was thought of, okay, well, if we put things on a road diet, that will be what happens. And for, but they also put down bike, bicycle markings.
And yeah, those were, if I remember correctly, those were calming lanes, like they kind of supposed to bring you in.
Bring you in.
I remember those.
And for years and years and years, the neighborhood did not park on Hilliard Drive in great detail. They may have had a guest or a party, and then they were gone. Because the yards are big enough to support people parking in their driveways, unless you have a party or something else. Over the last, and I think it may have been Councilmember Benevente who brought it forward, several people, newer residents, primarily newer residents, I assume, were getting tickets on Hilliard Drive for parking in the bicycle lanes. The police department was ticketing them based upon the residents in Country Club North saying, you're forcing us to go out in traffic when we walk, that we, we had, they thought it had a perfect neighborhood. He brought that forward, staff does what staff does, we looked at it and said, hmm, we really don't have authority to call this a bike lane.
They're putting some money to it.
No, there was no designation of saying that council said this is going to be a bike lane. And because you did not designate a bike lane, then it was by definition multi-use, because we didn't say you couldn't park in it. And so what staff did, staff went out six to eight months ago, and they scraped up all of the bicycle things. As you can imagine, the residents, unbeknownst to me or my neighbors who live in the area, started calling their council member and saying, what happened, and why are we seeing all of these cars parking in the roadway? And so the council member, before he left, his interest is, was not, to my knowledge, he's not here, he can speak for himself if he were, to say we're going to go back and restrict this or that, he was asking council to look for, for staff to come back with options, that if a neighborhood is desirous of saying, we don't, we want to have some area designated for people to walk, jog, or bicycle, is there some mechanism that the neighborhood could petition council to say, we're willing to, as a group, restrict it? The bicycle lanes and the multipurpose lanes are not available on most streets, because the streets aren't wide enough. If you've ever been on Clearwater, we actually have people who try to park on Clearwater. There is no opportunity safely on that hill for you to park on Clearwater. And some of the other areas around town, the streets aren't wide enough for a road diet or anything else. And so his, his motion, and again, council can consider, reconsider, is not to say he's in favor of one or the other. He is just asking staff to come back with options for council to consider, that may address the concerns of Country Club North, who for years enjoyed not having the cars parking there, to a large extent, but there are, there are quite a few cars that are parking now on the street. And, and I don't know if we've even looked at it, but I think there may even be something in our HOA, I mean, not HOA, in our restrictive covenants that may speak to that as well.
Yeah, so let me make sure I'm understanding. So the motion that was done, and I thought I understood the motion, but are you saying the motion is, is there, if a community wants to designate this as a non-parking area, which is considered the the bicycle lane, then they could petition for that, and then it would move forward then?
Yes.
Or, or what, come to council or come to?
The staff would bring you back options. There would be nothing that is in stone. We, it is, is there, and we may very well come back and say, as Councilman Honduras said, these are public streets, that unless it is a bicycle lane designated, we can't find a way in which you can restrict it. We very well could do that. At this moment, he is asking Adam and Sheila, from the motion that you heard, for us to go and bring back your report to see if that can be achieved.
Okay, got you, got you.
If I could circle this around before I get to Councilmember Davis. So in my neighborhood, where Hilliard has very wide streets, my neighborhood has very narrow streets. So to do the calming, when they resurfaced, they put down the multipurpose lane. So what I believe that Councilmember Benevente is saying, when somebody comes to us and say, I want a speed bump, we go through the process, and there has to be a certain amount of people in the neighborhood that want that speed bump, correct? Because you can get approved for a speed bump, and if you don't get the signatures, your neighborhood does not get the speed bump. The reason why that I'm so passionate about this, in my neighborhood, the streets are so tight. If you park on it, now, we have bicycles, we have runners, we have walkers, we have golf carts, that and we have a lot of hills. To me, I, I don't like it, because somebody just has to come around a corner, and, you know, people just think you're safe in that lane. But if you have somebody that parks in that lane, and then you have somebody across the street that parks, you can't, I mean, it is tight to get a fire truck down there. There's no double passing. So they say there is, but it's tight and around the hill. So I went, the neighborhood, half the people were like, shouldn't be able to park on the street. Shouldn't be able to do that. Half the neighborhood says, I'm going to park in the street. That's, you know, it's a city street, I should be able to do this. Came to the city, and they said, you're going to have to get a petition, and then we can talk about it. Well, when you have half the neighborhood wanting it, and half the neigh, there's nothing we can do at that point, but right now, there's really no process, and I think that's what he's asking for.
So the motion that we just did was a process, was a petition process?
Correct, or they'll come back and tell us.
But it doesn't mean that it's a done deal.
Correct.
Okay, or with the motion by itself. Okay, right? Okay, I understand better now, okay.
Councilmember Davis, and then Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just have a simple question. You went from McGill to McBane. I delivered mail on the MAC attack, we called it, for six years. McGill, McBane, McCray, and Mcfee. For six years. You can't put a bicycle lane going down Mcfee or McGill. You'll go down 100 miles an hour. And there's nobody in here that can bicycle up those steep hills. You have to be an Olympic star to do it.
Come to Shawcross.
So I don't understand how we came up with the process of putting bicycle lanes on those streets.
They're multi-use lanes.
Same thing. They're going to be using them for bicycles, correct?
They could, or they could park in them, walk in them, push a baby stroller in them.
They're going to push a baby stroller down those streets.
And don't forget the traffic calming effect that the multi-use lanes have.
That's crazy. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Do, okay, do I have any more questions? Councilmember Davis, you ready?
So I guess my question is, should they all just be multi-use lanes, instead of making them designated bicycle lanes? Because that's going to cause extra confusion.
To that, I would advocate no. Some of them should be bicycle lanes, because some of these locations are going to be on commercial corridors, they're going to be on high-speed roads, or higher speed roads than your neighborhood roads, and areas that are not necessarily residential neighborhoods. So those are the locations where you don't want to necessarily promote people to park vehicles, but you want to still permit bicyclists to use them safely amongst travel.
So in neighborhoods, could we just have bicycle lanes, and in the commercial areas have multi-use? Is that what you're saying? Opposite.
Swap.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Brian, there was a mention of the GOBON in the bicycle lanes, oh, okay. Probably should talk about that, too, so. Probably should talk about that too, so I think that speaks to your question, sir, that, um, there are, we're required to put some bicycle lanes, because that's what we put into the GEO bond. And so I think they went through the process of determining where they would go pursuant to that.
All right, any other questions? All right, so, Mr. Manager, do we need to? Okay, we have option one and option two. So do I have anybody that wants to make a motion? The recommended action is option one. And as I said, I was gonna make a motion, I can't, so would anybody like to make a motion? Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I would like to move that we approve the Code of Ordinance Amendment and place them on the consent agenda for an adoption.
Can I get a second, is that you, Councilmember here, a second?
No, I've had a question.
Okay, can I get a second, and then I'll go to Councilmember here? Do I have a second? Uh, second by Councilmember O'Hodra.
Okay, so, just for, just for one more clarity, guys, please. Uh, option one approval means what?
Page, so.
So we.
On page, uh, seven of the presentation and eight of the presentation. For dedicated bike lanes, we'll be approving those, that page, and then the next slide.
Okay, right, and, and I was aware, I'm just making sure, and they cannot be obstructed?
Dedicated bike lanes, correct, cannot be obstructed.
And that's with this motion?
Okay, any questions? Okay, Councilmember Thompson?
So this motion also quantifies that they're gonna use the projected bright plan described in this presentation, correct?
No, that, that, uh, previous bike plan from 2020 was already approved by council, that's already done.
The designated locations has already been approved?
Five years ago, yes.
Before we just looked at?
Yes, sir.
Then, then where does the motion that, the earlier motion that we added on this line, before we had the presentation, where does that, I mean, what?
That's a whole different motion. That motion is to bring back a process if somebody does not want parking in their neighborhood streets.
Right, so I don't see why that would not be first before we move to this, to adopt blocking it. If we're adopting to block it, what's the use of someone, of staff coming back with a process if we are or, or are not, this information?
What we're saying is, is if, if, but if the neighborhood does, does not want parking on the street, they're gonna come back with a process that they can have, they can get signatures, and they can ask, just like they asked for speed bumps.
Right, I understand that.
Then there has to be a percentage that wants it.
Then why not that be the only thing we need to be voting on, and not this process here? Let that be the number one objective, and not this? Because to me, it's like it's countering something out.
Yeah, I was going, um, so, Councilman here, um, we have to do some bike lanes because of the GEO bond, and then these bike lanes that council would designate with this action, they would not be placed in residential areas. So you don't have the issue of whether people want parking in them or not. Um, Councilman Hon- uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Benevente's motion was just about multi-use lanes. So multi-use lanes, you can currently park there, but if you don't want people parking there, you can petition the council
Okay.
to not have people park there.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarity.
Okay, do we have any que- are we ready to vote? All right, let's vote. All right, there is seven of us. All right, that passes six to two. Seven. Oh, seven to two, yes, all right. Let's go to six point oh five.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, so for this one, uh, for the pedestrian plan, also for the supplemental pedestrian plan, uh, Virginia Small is the project manager, our transportation planner. I'm gonna turn it over to her, who is going to introduce, uh, the project and also the consultant for this.
Thank you, Brian. Um, yes, for those of you who do not know me, uh, my name is Virginia Small, transportation planner for the Public Services Department. I report directly to Brian. And, um, I've had the pleasure of working with our consultant, um, with the pedestrian plan and the supplemental plan. Um, and I'd like to, before we get started, and before I introduce, um, uh, Dr. Zachary Bug, I'd like to thank a couple of people in the audience that have been on the steering committee and that have, um, donated a lot of their time to this effort. Um, we have NCDOT, our Division Six, and also FAMPO is present. And if there's any others, um, you know, thank you for coming, and, uh, and thank you for your support. So, um, now, I'll introduce Dr. Bug. Dr. Zachary Bug is an engineer at Kittleson and Associates in Wilmington. Let me turn my eyes on here. And he's had, uh, fourteen years of, of progressive transportation experience in the areas of multimodal transportation safety, analysis, planning, and design. His team previously led the City of Fayetteville, the City of Fayetteville's comprehensive transport- transportation plan, the FAMPO Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and the Town of Hope Mills Multimodal Congestion Management Plan. Uh, Dr. Zach is a registered professional engineer in North Carolina, Virginia, and Maryland. All right, Dr. Zach.
Good afternoon. So I'll be presenting on the Fayetteville pedestrian plan, and then we'll have another presentation on the supplemental pedestrian plan. And, um, I promise I will be succinct with this. Um, so this has been a collaboration with NCDOT's Integrative Ability Division. This actually works through NCDOT's planning grant, so it is, they are the owners of the project, and then city staff are the review team. Um, and, uh, supported us, worked with us, collaborated with us, uh, very regularly on this. So the objective of the plan is to expand the pedestrian network, develop projects, programs, and policies to enhance safety for all users. Um, we've emphasized projects near schools and universities, and, um, this has resulted in a hundred and forty-four recommended pedestrian plans. So you all saw the bike plan, which was a different project, that had over a hundred projects. Um, we're talking about another hundred and forty-four recommended sidewalk, crosswalk, and trail projects. The previous pedestrian plan was adopted in 2018. Um, it is mostly either built out or in a planning stage, or is funded. We'll get to that here in a little bit. Um, the current plan update provides a, a, just kind of a rebooted comprehensive safety and connectivity analysis. Um, again, we've had a hundred and forty-four projects that we'll get to that constitute all areas of the city, all districts, and we're here today to present that to council for review and adoption. You can see here just the goals of the study. Um, these align with city goals for planning, as well as, um, our steering committee members with FAMPO and NCDOT. The project kicked off in April of 2024. Uh, we held four steering committee meetings, uh, with a large group of folks that were not just agency staff and technical staff, but also community members, community leaders. Um, we divided this into, um, a series of phases that ended in implementation plan. So we want a plan like this, um, to not sit on a shelf and never get built out. Uh, we wanna have a detailed plan for funding and implementation. The steering committee, in addition to the folks that, uh, Ms. Small recognized, also included Cumberland County Schools, Sustainable Sand Hills, Fayetteville State University, um, and several other selected and, uh, very helpful guests. Um, as I mentioned, we met four times at key points throughout the project, um, and had collaborative work sessions. We also had two, uh, rounds of public engagement that, uh, both constituted online through our project website, an online comment map, as well as an in-person open house held at the beautiful Fast Transit Center facility. Just some pictures from that, and I, I do recall seeing several of you in the room at one or more of these meetings. So those were held in August of last year to identify challenges and opportunities, kind of an existing conditions analysis, if you will. And then we met again in December to present the draft recommendations. Um, each round of, uh, engagement, you can see just the numbers that we had. I'd say, uh, round one was very heavy on the online. We had over, uh, three hundred map comments and five hundred survey responses. Uh, we held that in conjunction with, uh, a woodpecker's game incentive to really draw out the community and, and enhance that participation. Uh, round two, I'd say there was more in-person engagement. Uh, we split up the, um, the open house hours to try and broaden, um, the groups throughout the day that would come and participate. So we had, uh, sixty in-person conversations that day, um, during the open house. Our existing conditions analysis con- consisted of these three elements. It was a plan review of the 2018 plan, whatever had not been, uh, in progress by this point. Uh, it included a field review of about a dozen locations, um, that were designated as, as highly critical, um, but not necessarily, um, the highest ranking in the outcomes of the plan. And then we had all of the demographic data, transportation infrastructure, existing schools, sidewalks, parks, employers, crosswalks, so on and so forth. And you can see here, this is just a map of the, every pin on this map is a location where someone got into a crash as a pedestrian or a cyclist in Fayetteville in the last ten years. We used a three-tiered process to get to those a hundred and forty-four projects, and you can imagine it as a filter. Uh, we started with a, a really large city, a lot of streets, a lot of sidewalk gaps. Uh, we poured things into that filter to try and look at where the most critical areas for improving sidewalks and crosswalks. Um, so that started with a plan review. Um, we looked at the 2018 pedestrian plan, the comprehensive transportation plan that was wrapped up a couple of years ago, um, by the same team, and then, uh, as well as FAMPO and NCDOT plans and program projects. This got two hundred and forty-four uncompleted projects that were evaluated. We then looked at a gap analysis. What was something that maybe didn't show up in a previous plan, but still had some issues? Um, we really used two performance measures to come to that gap analysis. Number one, was there a crash? That big map that showed all those pins on it, uh, did a crash occur in the last ten years? We, we saw that that was very important to look at that as a potential project. Um, the other performance measure is a little more subtle, and I would say it's much more proactive. Um, someone may not be walking near or across a road that they don't feel comfortable using. Someone may not be biking across a road that they may not feel comfortable using. So we use something called a level of comfort analysis that's based on a lot of different geometric, traffic speed, uh, the width of the roadway, the buffer between the sidewalk, if it exists or at all, um, and the curb line. So if something met both of those categories and was not already a planned project, we put that on a list, and that identified an additional seventy projects. So we're now up to two hundred and forty-four plus seventy, so that's three hundred and fourteen to try and condense into this project score. Um, we got it down to a hundred and forty-four through, again, additional applications of those two performance measures, the crash analysis and the level of comfort. And what we heard from city staff and from the steering committee was, let's keep that a hundred and forty-four and put everything in the plan, because we got a lot of work to do, and we wanna keep everything on the table. So what we then did for those hundred and forty-four projects, you'll see them mapped out here in the presentation, we scored them, and we scored them in two ways. Number one was based on a variety of evaluation criteria that you can see listed here. Maybe there was more than one crash, so we wanna give it a higher score. Um, comfort, equity, connectivity, land use, very, very detailed measures. The other way we looked at it was implementation phasing. What's the lowest hanging fruit that we can kind of take care of with the, the least amount of money? That was what we got into near term, medium term, and long term. So within each of those tiers, you'll see the near term, the projects will be scored from highest to lowest. Then the medium term, the projects will be scored, and then the long term. So there's two different kind of ways of stratifying all of these a hundred and forty-four projects. Just some statistics up in the infographic here. Uh, we had eighty-one percent of the projects in an area with a, a high amount of zero car ownership. We had seventy-eight percent of the projects connected to an existing sidewalk within the city. Uh, seventy-three percent were near a key destination, like the ballpark. Um, fifty-eight percent of them were on a corridor and intersection where a bike or pedestrian crash had occurred in the last five years. And then forty-three percent of these projects were near schools. And we have a whole separate presentation about, um, some additional facilities identified near schools. Then getting to the recommendations, we've talked about the location. What are we actually recommending here? Well, you can see a few types of projects. These were all plainly put onto, um, the materials that we went out to the public at the open house and the online engagement for folks to really help us. Uh, what, what do you envision in your community? Is it things like multi-use lanes that we just talked about? Um, do we wanna see something different? Do we wanna see more of the same thing? It's working great. So wanted to get these types of projects out to people, um, to really comment on. So sidewalks and trails, um, like you have on Clifdale Road and Skybow, the big multi-use, uh, trails, having more greenways that are off, uh, like the, the Cape Fear River Trail Extension separated from the road entirely. Uh, looking at intersection and corridor enhancements through mid-block crosswalks, uh, traffic calming. And then, uh, especially school and neighborhood connections. So due to the large number of projects, we did divide into near term, medium term, and long term, which, um, I think these build-out, uh, scenarios are, are, I'd say, pretty aggressive and positive, optimistic, but, um, there are lots of funding sources available for these things, which we'll get to here in a minute. Here's the big map. This is all a hundred and forty-four projects mapped in the city, and the different colors tell you the different, uh, implementation tier. The numbers on here are just the ID of the project. So project number one oh nine is on Ramsey Street, it's a medium-term project. If you wanted to see more detailed information about the scores, uh, how that project shook out against all of the other a hundred and forty-three projects, um, I'll direct you to the tabular information in your packet, as well as the project final report. Now let's talk about cost. Um, you saw some numbers with, uh, the previous couple of presentations. There's a lot of cost associated with this large of a build-out. Um, when we start talking about sidewalks on streets without existing right-of-way for that or an easement, or if you're talking about building, uh, ten-foot-wide multi-use trail, or even putting in crosswalks. Um, I would say these costs include several layers of safety factors, uh, because we all know construction costs have been increasing, uh, very rapidly, and sometimes the price of right-of-way may be different in one constrained area than another. So these costs, I would say, are probably gonna be good for a while, fingers crossed. Um, and just to give you a sense of the total package, if everything were to be built out, we're at about seven hundred and seventy million dollars. So let's get into a little bit more statistics, uh, and numbers, thinking through, um, how far has the city come from the 2018 plan? Prior to 2018, you can see there are about two hundred and sixty-three miles of sidewalk, if you look at centerline miles. Um, there are about forty of miles of sidewalk recommended from that plan. Eighty-five percent of those have been completed under construction or funded for construction, so they're programmed. And then if you think about where we are today, these next few bubbles, there's about twelve hundred miles of streets in the city. Um, about twenty-three percent of those currently have sidewalk, and then another forty miles are coming out of this plan. So, um, all of those projects, a hundred and forty-four projects, get you forty miles. So if you total them all up, we really need to start thinking about, you know, where is the buck gonna have the most bang, right? And so that's what all of this analysis has really funneled into. Um, and just to give you a sense, there's three miles of near term. These are really the, the, the lowest hanging fruit, talking about adding crosswalks at major intersections, filling in some small gaps. Uh, twenty-two miles in the medium term, and then fifteen miles in the long term. Also had some policy and program recommendations. Uh, we are providing some recommendation language in the plan about adopting a complete streets policy, um, and a traffic calming policy. Those are not articulated to the point where we need to start talking about legal language and asking for, um, specific ordinance adoption or anything like that. These are just, um, I would say, general planning, uh, recommendations. Um, implementing creative safety awareness campaigns, programming, training, um, having a transportation-focused city commission, and there are several, uh, peer cities that do have this mechanism. And then continuing to engage with K-12 public schools and prioritize some projects near schools. Um, I'll list here just a few I'll list here just a few additional community partners for advancing the plan. The more of these you can have as your champions, the higher the probability of success in achieving these funding goals. And so with that said, we are going to be proposing a couple of options, as you've seen before. Option one is to approve the comprehensive pedestrian plan update to be placed on a consented engine for adoption. Option two is to not approve the plan and provide staff with further direction, and we are recommending that option one take place.
Thank you, sir. Okay, counsel. Counsel, what is your thought? Where would you like to go from here? Questions? The first one that I see is Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, sir. First, Zach, let me say a great presentation. This is one of the most thorough presentations I think I've seen since I've been on council, and it probably took me a day and a half to read it all, because most of you guys know I'm a sidewalk fanatic. But my first question would be, how did you base this survey? Did you base it off what they wanted, or did you base it off of what we needed?
Great question. So, you know, we, as transportation planners, we kind of straddle the fence sometimes between asking crowdsourcing, asking the public what they want, and then also getting the objective data and letting the transportation planners and the engineers use their judgment. In this case, we had a lot of these wishes. In fact, I think there was one citizen who came to the first open house that probably 40% of these comments were his wishes. So there were some very involved community members, and I really appreciate that because I think folks have an eye, once they get, become a fanatic, you know, they start to really key in on where the issues are. So we started with that, and it was data. We had enough comments on there to really become data. What we heard at the direction of public services staff was, we want the transportation data to speak for itself. We want to use things like crash data, objective measures that are safety-focused, and let the plan be based on that.
Well, let me just say I appreciate that, because I put out numerous times to my constituents in my district to make sure they come out and do the survey, and that's why I was there for both days, just to see how many people would show up. But since you mentioned data, let me ask you about some DOT data. I just asked staff to look into a crash that's always in front of our Cross Creek substation, right there in front of Revere and Rayford Road. According to DOT, now this is according to their records, in the past five years, they have had 84 accidents at that one intersection. How come that intersection didn't meet the criteria of getting sidewalks?
That was, I'm assuming, most of those crashes were vehicle-vehicle.
Correct.
So we all-
Even though we've had three with pedestrians.
Okay. We did look at areas where a pedestrian crash had occurred, and that, you mentioned that Cross Creek-
Right. It's directly in front of Cross Creek Substation.
We looked at, it really had to have a couple of different things. It had to have the crash occur, and then it had to have a gap in the facility. So in that area, you've got the gap present. We then look at a final measure, which is called level of comfort. And that can be based on the desire lines. It can be based on, is someone wanting to walk there? And it's really meant to be more proactive than kind of waiting for a crash to occur.
Got you, got you.
So it sounds like it didn't shake out that that made the 144, you know, based on your review. So unfortunately, that's, the rest of the city, you know, kind of went into that 144.
I get that, I get that. I'm about pedestrian safety everywhere, not just in my district.
That's right.
But let me also add, and my final question would be, is we all know that DOT is putting in sidewalks on both sides, from the VA Hospital all the way down to Robinson Street. And you talked about your near term, your midterm, and your long term. Is that based on the cost that it would put in for those connectivities? Because I would always believe that we should first fulfill the sidewalks requirements, to fill in the gaps that don't cost that much money, before we try to do one that costs $6 million to take up all our funding.
That is absolutely the strategy. So let's say we had $1 million to spend out of the bond or out of, you know, NPO funding or something like that. How many projects can we get out of that $1 million? That's what that near term is all about.
Got you, got you. And the priority list for the near term is what will go first, so forth and so on.
And the priority list within the near term is based on how many crashes occurred, all of those other measures.
Got you. Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it. Great presentation. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
All right. Councilmember Banks McLoughlin, and then Honduras.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, this was definitely a great, thorough presentation. I do have a question as we talk about NC DOT. So off of Hoak Loop Road, I'm sure you're probably familiar with that, there have been several accidents, pedestrian crashes. I think we had two or three of the crosswalk individuals were hit off that road. There are several subdivisions on both sides. I know on the, on the left side of the road, there is a sidewalk, but on the right side, there's not. So is that something that we can look to, look towards, towards the future as far as maybe possibly adding that on the list? Again, too, I do know we just got us the bus route over there probably two years ago or so, so that's my concern. And it also has a school on that road. It's what, I just didn't see that on the list.
Yeah, it's, you know, there, these problems are widespread, and we've tried to make this something that can kind of be easily stepped through. It sounds like this is another area, maybe, where you're seeing something that you expected might make the plan but hasn't shown up in it. I can't speak on behalf of NC DOT, but I do work regularly with Traffic Safety Unit, and when there are multiple pedestrian and bicycle crashes at a location, there's a very thorough process for documenting that separately from these long-range planning activities that we do. They are much more near-term when something like that happens. So I don't know the specific location or whether that's in the program, but as someone who does prepare those packages and does field investigations for those regularly, I can say that that will trigger their next, through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, their next batch of near-term implementation.
Okay. And I was going to say, if, as far as with council, I would love to see if, you know, maybe we can have that conversation with NC DOT. I know we have them here in a building, so that hopefully areas like this can be added to the list. So that's a motion or consensus. Well, can I get a second?
So I think that-
Oh, okay. I didn't know you.
Okay, so councilmember here seconded, but I mean, we have to see, you know, is this a private road? Is it a-
It's the NC DOT road.
Okay, but do, is there a business in front of it?
No, it's school and subdivision. Up Hoak Loop Road, we have a, the city has a recreation center on that road, and actually we have two schools on, off Hoak Loop Road. That's where we have the new bus route. And there's also two churches.
So would, Mr. Manager, would that go to FAMPO? Would that go to?
And I'm fine with it going wherever, just-
Yeah, I'm just trying to, no, yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, the, okay. The motion was to see if it can either go to FAMPO, NC DOT, just so that that conversation can be had, not just with the, off Hoak Loop Road, but even your area, just to add that to the list of a conversation. I know the city can't do anything right now, but definitely NC DOT.
I'm just trying to figure out the right place.
Yeah, okay, wherever it needs to go.
So if, and I'm not sure, Mayor Protem, if this is the motion, if the motion is to approve option one with the addition of directing that to FAMPO the most appropriate, I think that-
Well, yeah, I would take that motion, yes.
Okay. All right. So do I have a question? No. Okay.
And it's Hoak Loop Road, just a-
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Honduras?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I don't know that this is specific to the motion or the presentation, so if y'all want to vote and come back. I was going to ask FAMPO Director Hank Graham is here, some questions that is not pertinent to this motion per se.
So would we like to do the, take, let's take the vote? Okay. Do we need to restate the motion? Okay, all right. All right, that is nine to zero. Councilmember Honduras?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Graham, if you don't mind, would you come to the, to the podium, please?
I hope I can speak from my chair.
Ha, 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 no, sir, we got to get you on the mic so we can have your words of wisdom on record. Was, did FAMPO bless this or see, review this plan?
Yes, we have been a participant as steering committee representatives from the inception, and I am in the process of reviewing it myself for comments and another staff person applying.
Thank you. And have we explored, have we exhausted all potential grants that might help us in this pedestrian plan?
That are currently-
Available?
Available, yes, but lots of additional funding sources and lots of additional funding grants that will become available in the future, and we will work with the city and FAMPO members to apply for those grants.
But you keep, you and your staff keep a pulse on those grants?
We do.
How many grant writers, if any, does, full-time does FAMPO have on staff currently?
I wouldn't say. We don't have a designated grant writer. Staff responsibilities are divvied up by transportation mode, and so if there's for our transit planner, if there's transit grants and transit funding available, that staff person will acquire or attempt to obtain, you know, complete those grant applications and attempt to work with FAST and our other transportation partners in obtaining funding for transit.
Thank you. So is it more efficient? Would it be more beneficial to have a full-time grant writer, or is it more efficient to have it kind of spread out within departments?
I think it would be beneficial, long-term, to have someone concentrated or with that focus and responsibility to obtain funding sources and grant applications, but, you know, we don't currently-
And your staff is how many currently? Full-time?
Seven, right now.
Seven, and you probably need at least 10?
Maybe, maybe 11.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we are ready to go to 6.05. I've missed it.
So I'm back to present the supplemental pedestrian plan, which is really all about a school network analysis that we developed, customized to the city of Fayetteville, Publix, and the Cumberland County school system. So you all, I think we introduced this around May of last year as we were getting started. So residents, city council members, we've repeatedly heard that there's concerns over walkability within Fayetteville and especially near schools. Major roadways like Andrews Road and Clifdale Road, you can name all of them off the top of your list, they all create barriers between schools and the communities that they service. Often you see something that might look like this right out the window, or even worse, just a couple painted lines across the street, and there's a crossing guard out there, but that's it. So recent planning efforts from FAMPO and the city have, they've all highlighted the need for pedestrian improvements near schools. And what this is, it's a targeted transportation study that is looking at safety improvements near schools. Just to give an overview, we identified 26 high-priority schools, and I'll talk about how we got to 26. We developed a cut sheet, and what a cut sheet is, is it's getting ready to go to design and concept, has a nice refined cost associated with it, something that you can put into your CIP as you start to allocate funding. So we got that far, we got pretty detailed to a total of 12 schools in town. So the recommendations today, we'd like you all to review and support these. We kicked this off in parallel with the overall comprehensive pedestrian plan. This project was owned by the city, whereas the other one was, the owner was NC DOT, working closely with the city. We wanted to focus on a study area that included all K-12 public schools that service city residents, and in some cases, the school may be outside the city limit, but their area, service area includes students in, within the city. We prioritize schools based on a series of data-driven performance measures that were discussed in detail with city manager's office. We wanted to develop cost-effective, implementation-ready project recommendations, which gets us to those cut sheets. Throughout the process, we met bi-weekly with the team from city public services staff as well as Cumberland County schools. We wanted them to be involved throughout the project so that we were not proposing something out of this plan that created a burden or that would not be supported by the schools themselves. So here is just a map of what those 64 public schools are. Again, some of them are just outside the city limits. We generated a half-mile walking shed, so that means as you walk, it's a distance that you would walk to school, and that's our little bubble around every school that we really looked at in detail. We generated a lot of performance metrics based on these four criteria. So looking at the population of the school, the higher the enrollment, the higher the number of students that are not transported by bus, that got a higher score. Of course, we looked at things like safety, history of bike and pedestrian crashes, level of comfort measures that we talked about in the earlier presentation, what that speed limit would be within the walk shed. We had another score based on infrastructure, just how much traffic volume are we talking about goes past the school? How many of the roads have sidewalk on them? How many of the intersections have crosswalks at them? And then finally, we looked at demographics. What is something called the Transportation Disadvantage Index that NC DOT provides, as well as how many of the neighborhood residents don't have access to a vehicle? So all of those went into a big pot. We looked at all the data, and we said we're going to rank the schools themselves from 1 to 64 based on these scores. We used three statistical methods. I'm not going to go into detail on all of these, but one's called percentile. Ninety-fifth percentile gets the highest score, so on and so forth. Another one is called Z-score, which is really based on how many standard deviations is the school performing above the average. And then finally, a cluster, which has put everything into an algorithm, and then it spits out these schools, they all have the highest need, and so we're going to use those. If any school had a yes or was the top scoring in any one of those metrics, we moved it forward in the process and considered it to be a high-priority school. And you can see those listed here. Some of them, all three of them, no matter how we slice it and dice it, they're going to be high priority. But even the ones that only showed up under one metric, we wanted to go ahead and move them forward. So here's where they are, is the top 26 schools. They do hit, I believe, every district, if, maybe not almost all of them, but widely across the city limits. So how did we engage with Cumberland County schools? When we got to those 26, we reached out personally to staff at each of those 26 schools to say, what problems are you experiencing? Is it issues with children crossing the street, or just no sidewalk in general? Is it speeding? So on and so forth. Got a lot of great feedback. We didn't want to ask the schools to write the plan for us, but the people that are on the ground and seeing people walk to school every day, those are the best source of data for us. So wanted to get those in front of us first and foremost. We heard from 11 of those 26 schools after multiple attempts to reach out. What we heard was, for the remaining 15, let's go ahead and keep things moving and go ahead and do our recommendations based on our engineering judgment. But for those 11, I'd say we had a little bit more emphasis and a little bit better ability to come up with some detailed solutions. We then took all of that, went through our different toolboxes of treatments, you know, are we going to look at doing signalization at a crosswalk because you've got higher traffic volume and speeds? Are we going to look at doing medians or maybe some other detailed traffic calming measures? We went back to the 11 that originally responded and said, are you okay with this? Does this create a burden for you that we go in and improve infrastructure? Because maybe it means they got to hire more crossing guards because we've put another crosswalk or something like that. All of them resoundingly responded that they loved the ideas, that they supported their recommendations, and so we continued to move those forward. Just a preview here of our toolkit, you know, again, we wanted to focus on safety. Crossing infrastructure was really the key element. Sidewalks are great- Sidewalks are great. We want to do those as much as we can. It's really those crosswalks that I'd say take extra effort and are really critical. So just a few images there of what those could look like. That gets us to the design and to the cut sheet. We had 11 schools, again, that responded. We added in one more based on a few things happening over at A.D. Wilkins. You had, in that place, you had the rail trail on Skybo Road. You had some private development in the area, ability to build up some stuff. So we went in and added one more. Based to these recommendations on multiple discussions with schools, city staff, wanted to align with projects in the overall PED plan, as well as projects that are currently ongoing. And then just a desktop and field review of infrastructure. And that looked like driving around, this was actually the day after the second PED plan opened house. I went out personally and looked, took a lot of pictures of where these schools were during the student drop-off time periods, just to kind of see what was going on. So, talking through costs again, here's the dollar amount, based on a few assumptions. We were able to go in a lot more detail with these 12 schools than we were for 144 pedestrian projects across the city. And that's just a matter of the time and energy spent. So these numbers, while still planning level, I'd say have a lot more accuracy because we've gone in and drawn on a map. Here's where the sidewalk can go, here's where the crosswalk can go. So your total here is about $28 million. I still feel like that's a pretty conservative estimate. So, yes, sir?
Councilmember here.
Sir, could you go back to that, the one previous? Just for clarity and understanding, because I share several of these schools. But as I look at, I can understand, well, I don't know if I understand algebra, but as we look at E.E. Smith, for example. Okay, I take that back. I saw it wrong. I saw E.E., and the first thing I thought about was Smith, because I was, I was just trying to think. I was just saying, man, we got all those connectabilities there. All right, so let's go to Algeby Wilkins. And the crosswalks and sidewalk, I'm trying to understand. I walked that area, I kind of know that school pretty good and the surrounding area. Where is the misconnection? Because you have them all the way around the schools connecting to Bragg Boulevard and going down toward the mall area. I'm trying to understand that, what the study means for that. And we've had the improvements with, you know, for the handicap areas on those curbs.
Yes, sir. So there are, the curb ramps have been rebuilt, reconstructed to be accessible. Where we really saw the issue was crossing Skybo Road, providing the, so if there are students that are trying to get to school and crossing the street, my guess is they don't feel comfortable doing that today.
Right, but that's a real big issue, yes.
So providing the additional pavement markings to provide the traffic calming there, to make that crosswalk. Maybe the children still wouldn't feel comfortable doing it themselves, but it's going to be a whole lot better than what it is today.
Are you good?
Okay, well, yeah, I was done, but when you were saying about crossing, and that is a major issue. We've heard that for years, but I know this, but wouldn't this be also within a combination? And do, is that how it's thought of whenever you do this? For the push-button system, which, gosh, I mean, I was screaming about others several years ago when we got that 450 million. So do they work together as a part of your study?
Yes, sir. All of those improvements, it does take a long list, very incremental changes. All of that is included in this cost. So it would be adding the pedestrian push buttons and the signal heads, providing a high-visibility crosswalk markings instead of nothing at all or just a ladder marking.
Thank you, Ms. Trey. I do have a question before I go to Councilmember Thompson. So these schools that I'm looking at, these 12 schools, were out of the 26, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And these are the only ones that called you back or, so did you call them? Did you send a letter? What did you do? Because I'm a little bit taken back that Pine Forest High School and Howard Hall are right beside each other. They get out at the same time. We have mothers with minivans and 16-year-old drivers trying to get out at the same time. We have a development that is in the city that their high school is right across the street, and these kids have to walk to elementary school every day, and there's not even a sidewalk? There's not a crossing, there's absolutely nothing? And if you're telling me that, I want to know how you reached out to them? Because two schools that desperately need this, and we have kindergarteners walking with their parents, of course. What did we do to say, we've got this opportunity for you?
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question. So after we got to this point in the process, we held a work session with two representatives from Cumberland County schools. One of them was within the superintendent's office. It was not the superintendent, but it was a person that had a contact list.
Okay, so, not to cut you off, but I am. So what I'm hearing is, is that this was a city, we funded this. We talked to the school board, and we left it to the school board to call the schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The Cumberland County school's representative?
The representative of Cumberland County, so.
So not the school board, Adam, do you want to?
I apologize, I said that wrong. It is school staff, school, the school system staff representative to have the schools get back in contact with you. So I personally am not prepared to vote on anything of this until I make sure that these 26 schools were informed. Because I can tell you that we have been working to get a stoplight and this to happen around that area longer than I've been sitting in this chair. And now we have the opportunity, and I can guarantee you, I can call up there and they have no idea. Because I don't think anybody would brush that off. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let me just give you some ease. As I was getting briefed by Zach as we was going through these two days of surveys, he relayed to me how many school representatives was present. I got on the phone myself and called Dr. Conley and said, please make sure all 49 schools are informed about the presentation that's being held in a transit center for two days. He confirmed and assured me that all 49 schools has been contacted. That's the first thing I'd like to say. Second, my question to you, Zach, is about the picture of the first presentation about the crossing guards. It has been said that DOT will not put markings down unless they are repaving. Well, they're in the process of repaving Rayford Road from Raykonda Road all the way down to Bunce Road, which they're currently doing. How can we get them to put the crosswalk paving down in front of 71st High School between 71st School Road and Graham Road?
Here's how you do it. Put it in a plan, and this is how it gets relayed. I know that's a pretty simple answer, but NCDOT, their mechanisms for implementing these types of things, they want to see it put in a comprehensive transportation plan, a pedestrian plan, like we're doing here. They want to see these cut sheets. This is a starting point for them to go in and do construction plans as part of their resurfacing.
So how do we expedite that, Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mr. Manager, since they're in the process of doing that currently?
Would you like to respond? Okay. Well, I would, I would recommend that you adopt the plan, and that then gives you the opportunity to take, this is in an appendix, all of these drawings. Their starting point, again, these are not construction plans, but these can be handed to your NCDOT division staff who have been involved in the overall pedestrian.
The reason I say that is because what I just mentioned is not in your priorities, under the first 15.
The, can you repeat that, please?
What your priorities were, the first cost estimate for the first 12 does not mention what I just asked for. That's why I'm asking.
So, specific to 71st and Rayford Road? The Lloyd Ament Elementary School includes the 71st High School and Middle School walk sheds.
But Lloyd Ament is going to have that crosslight thing in the middle of Rayford Road from the sidewalk under Lloyd Ament. I'm talking about further down in front of 71st School Road where the McDonald's is, where all the kids go after school.
Yes, and so that mid-block crosswalk, the Hawk Signal, that is part of DOT's project.
Right.
For the crosswalk markings that this project is recommending, if this project were to be, or if this plan were to be approved, then we could take these cut sheets, take it to DOT and say, DOT, we would like a change order on the Rayford Road project inside of your project area. What would it take for this to happen?
And you would annotate the crosswalk to be in front of the 71st School Road, the McDonald's.
That, so the crosswalk in front of 71st School Road should be coming back? Are you saying that you want it in place even whenever the pavement is torn up?
No, 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 no. They've already finished paving that part.
Oh, okay, yes.
They just have, no, I'm sorry, they've already done the sidewalks. They haven't paved it yet. They've already done the sidewalks. The sidewalks are complete.
Yeah, the crosswalks that are going to be crossing Rayford Road and 71st High School Road and Graham Road, they're all going to be high vis, based off of NCDOT.
You just made me smile, Mr. Brian, I liked it. But now I have another question for you, Mr. Zach. When it comes to your cross, your cost estimates, when it came to Lloyd Ament connectivity, if we already have sidewalks on both sides of Rayford Road from Raykonda Road all the way down to Strickland Bridge, how do you get $2.6 million for connectivity? Where's that money going?
There's an additional connection being requested through the back of the school to connect to the neighborhoods behind, so that
Remington?
Yes, I can't remember the exact name of the
Remington or Hampton Oaks, which one?
I think, Remington.
Remington?
So that cuts down on what we call exposure rate. So the longer that a child would be walking along a major arterial to get a direct route into school.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brian.
So I want to, I want to go back to, so I'm seeing, and I apologize, that I'm seeing the first 26 that you have them in line of this school network analysis spreadsheet, and you have them 1, 2, 3, all the way down to 26?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. What happened?
Oh.
So there must be two different, different ones, because they're changing. So I want to go back to the meeting that you had, the school board. So, okay, so I just texted the principal, said, do you know anything about this? And she said, no, we're getting some? So my question is, I just, I'm having a hard time. Well, who did they tell? He says everybody knew. Did they email? Because I'm not going to let this rest. Because to say that 26 people, 26 schools are in line to have this, and we just went and told people, how did they tell them? I just, I'm having a hard time that we paid for this, that we, you know, that it was made right now that, no, they didn't answer the call, so therefore I... So can you tell me how that process went? They were there, there was two people, and y'all just told them and said, go tell? And who were those two people? I guess we can do that offline.
Well, I would, we can do that, but I think if you go back as well to how the group came up with their recommendations, the comfort levels. And so, to answer your question, I guess, can I ask one? The feedback that you received from those additional, from the schools that did respond, how was that feedback used and the determination and the criteria? Because I think you had the weighting of that as well. So was it 15%?
Yes, sir. So we were directed from city staff, again, to let the data from this part of the analysis drive what we consider to be priority. So that got us to the 26. After we got to the 26, we asked, we told the schools, all 26, through Cumberland County school staff, that your school has been identified as high priority through this plan. What would you like to see in terms of treatments? We also, and this is maybe a different part of your question, but we also developed our own recommendations for all 26 of these, and they're on another little drawing. So we wanted to look at all of them, even the ones that didn't respond. But we wanted to go and make sure that we were not offering up something that was not supported by the school. And so that was where the question came in, via the Cumberland County schools representative. There were multiple cycles of feedback. So after the first four or five weeks where we didn't hear anything, we asked again, and then we went through Councilmember Thompson and his approach. I'm sorry, but
So, so again, counsel, and I'm gonna, I will do my own research on this, but what I will say with Pine Forest, and I was under the assumption that this was being taken care of because in front of Stone Gate, that was built in the city, that is on a city road, and right across the street from it is a county school that's surrounded by all city, every bit of the city surrounding them. There is not sidewalks when that neighborhood was built in the city. Now, everybody's going to look at me and say, no, it's not. We've had this conversation. We went through the GSA map. It is right in the city. So our children in the city are walking across, are walking down a path for the past 20 years, 15 years, 15, 20 years, and you can see where they're walking, and it's on city land, going across the street. And they finally get a chance to get something, and I'm hearing somebody was supposed to tell them. So I, we will go offline and talk more about this, but I cannot support this with 12 schools and the fact that they say that 14 other ones just didn't acknowledge it. Thank you.
May I say something? So what we're saying is that all these 26 schools made it to the list, and we have cut sheets on all 26 of them. So if DOT is doing a project, for example, we have a cut sheet that we can provide them. Why we itemize the 14 is that we have received comments from those 14, and we were able to tailor our cut sheets to those comments for the 14. But in the absence of comments from the remaining 12, we still did, we didn't have cut sheets for them, but they are based on our judgment and not necessarily input from the school. So we can certainly go back, and if there is a particular school or a couple of schools that we need to add more detail, we can go back and add them to those cut sheets for the remaining 12.
So I'm going to, I promise I'll leave it at this. If you do the numbers of the amount of children with these two schools, it's close to 2,700. It's two schools. One thing would take care of two schools. So it's one of the highest in population of high schools and one of the highest for elementary schools. There's no sidewalks. There's no crosswalks. Thank you. Anybody else? Are we ready to, I'm sorry. Okay, Councilmember Hondros, you're first, and then McNair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, team, for the presentation. Ms. Sheila, did I understand your answer to the question was that the staff looked at the data and then included in the information for each school was comments or preferences from school representatives that responded?
For the 14 that we were successful in reaching.
But the data
The data, it's just specific in terms of the engineering methodologies or the propositions in terms of in terms of what we're going to do to improvements. That's the input that we got from the school, but the data allowed for twenty-six to make it to the list.
Right, and included in the data, was there, um, attendance, um, like how many students attend that? And then did we have a, a percentage or a, a projection estimate of how many of those students walk to school?
Yes, sir. This, uh, particular table here has all of the components and the weighting. It has student enrollment, students in non-transport zones, and so forth.
Gotcha. Thank you. I, I, I just want to make sure I understood correctly. Um, can we put, um, number ten, slide ten on the... So how can we, or will it be if we pass this plan? How do we request respectfully from DOT, on DOT roads, that they do sidewalk markings that look like that? And not the, not the, um, perpendicular lines that are, you know, you got one thick line where the vehicles are supposed to stop, and then sometimes instead of the darker kind of parallel hash marks like there are here, you just have two lines where the, the crosswalk is. And a lot of vehicles don't pay attention, and they're halfway stopped in the, in the, um, crosswalk instead of, this is a more identifiable crosswalk. How do we get these lanes on DOT roads and not, not the parallel or perpendicular lines?
Uh, there are multiple different ways that we can bring it to DOT's, uh, attention and try and attempt to get it in there. However, at the end of the day, if it is reaching a high enough level of saying that this is something that is an absolute must, then, um, the, the first and foremost approach would most likely have to be something similar to our CIP, the NCDOT Companion Fund, that is in the current CIP funding, uh, proposal, which is essentially, uh, city funds being used on DOT roads if DOT doesn't approve.
Kind of a, 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 a improvement over then their design?
Yes.
Um, perhaps in our strategic planning or in the future, not necessarily today. Uh, but I would like to have that discussion where we, as a council, approve, um, elevated, you know, upgraded crosswalks like this instead of the bare minimum. Uh, whether it's funded by DOT, obviously that'd be preferable, funded by grants or ultimately funded by us, but that's for another day. Uh, but I'm prepared to make a motion on this if there's no other questions.
Um, you're right. Councilmember McNair.
My question is to, uh, City Manager. Um, can you, um, confirm if, um, it's, I think it was a twenty-twenty plan, uh, crosswalk, um, approved funds are in for Seventy First High School and Riley Road?
I'll have to ask staff, um, about that.
Uh, are, are you asking if there are any CIP funds that are currently in place for these projects?
Y, yes, I emailed, um, um, City Manager probably about a month or so ago, asking about a twenty-twenty plan for Seventy First, uh, crosswalks and Riley Road in District Seven.
So for the CIP, we do have funding for sidewalks that have identified projects from the sidewalk plan. However, for the supplemental, uh, school plan, um, there is not current CIP funding for the projects that have been identified and what has been discussed in this specific presentation.
Okay.
Well, I think that we've already brought to council all of the, uh, projects that are going towards the geo, geobond. I mean, I think those have come to you and through the administrative, um, report and so on and so forth. So all of that money has been spoken for and named projects, and certainly-
All right. Councilmember Benavente?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I'm always super impressed by, um, this department's use of regression models and statistical, like, review. It is really, really impressive. I think that, um, when it comes to our city's, um, claim to be data-driven in our decision-making, this is a great example of that. Um, and so I think it only makes sense for us to move forward. I would just ask, perhaps in the future, if your department can be tapped to assist with other, um, policies that we have, before this, as City Council. I can just imagine so many other, um, questions that we are asking that could be, that could benefit from the kind of analysis that y'all do. Um, in particular, when we really see issues of public safety, I really hope that we can, um, be informed and approach problem-solving the way that this department does. It's, like I said, I think, very well done. I think we should move forward with the recommendations from staff. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more question. Um, can we get the slide where it's JW Coon Elementary School? And I just need clarification.
I think that's Appendix C.
Appendix C, yes.
Is that it? No, that's Algebra Wilkins. Um, what page is that?
Is it that? I don't know.
It says Appendix C, mine doesn't look like that. Let me see.
It's JW Coon. It's where the sidewalks are gonna go.
Okay, I have that. It is Appendix C.
Can it go, can it be put up there?
Um, if we had our document camera.
Okay, so what I'm seeing is, what I'm understanding through the cam, is that the purple is where the sidewalks are supposed to go, correct? When I am looking at this, all these sidewalks are going in a neighborhood. So they are going inside, one, two, three, four, it's all the neighborhood. So like, if you're in your neighborhood, you're gonna take off, are you taking off part of the road or are you taking off part of their, um, yard? Because this is, I mean, this goes back to our multi, mu, multipurpose lanes. If a neighborhood connects, so... Does everybody understand what I'm saying? So we are going into neighborhoods and putting in- Appendix C.
I couldn't answer that while folks are pulling it up. So the purpose of providing neighborhood improvements is to provide children in a broader walk shed the ability to walk to school on a separated facility, um, sidewalk. You're able to pull it up, okay. We've started with sidewalk being the ideal improvement. We've started with sidewalk being the ideal improvement, um, from a safety perspective. Uh, if the sidewalk is not feasible, for example, if there is no easement to build that sidewalk on the street, then a multi-use lane would be another, perhaps, more cost feasible solution.
It just doesn't make, I, I, I understand this. But again, we have a neighborhood that the kids go out, the elementary school's right there, and they, there's no sidewalk. There's no bus that comes to get them, they have to walk to school, and they have no sidewalk. And the reason why they're not on this list, so, and it's not even one-fourth of this. So I will let it go, and I'm ready to take a motion. Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, um, Derek and then, um, Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Thompson and Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let me just say that, uh, one of the reasons why I was so adamant about sidewalks is because we have kids walking to school in the streets. If you look at it, you can see a dirt path of, where kids are walking in the street. So if we don't connect to these neighborhoods, we're at the opportunity of getting our kids prone to getting hit by cars because they have to walk into the streets. If we have to, uh, uh, access private property in neighborhoods to get them to a sidewalk, then that's what we have to do. That's the purpose of this plan. That's why I'm glad that you were so thorough in what you was doing, Zach, where we can see that this is what we need to do. So my motion today is that we approve the supplemental fair and real comprehensive pedestrian plan and place it on a consent agenda for adoption. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Question, Councilmember Hondros.
I seconded his motion too.
Yes.
Um, so if we approve this today, there's no funding, right? This is just, we're just moving the plan forward, and then funding won't be identified in the future?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, that's what I thought, I was just making sure. Thank you.
So, so, um, I, I will say, I am gonna vote for this, but I will say to you, Councilmember Thompson, what you said is exactly what I'm sitting here fighting for. They have sidewalks, but they're walking in on Andrews Road with hundreds of cars going by every day on a city street with no sidewalk. As, they're not on the list because they didn't get a phone call. So I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Yes, I, I, yes.
I wanted, the City Manager, I wanted to know, what did this study cost?
City Manager, can you, um, answer that question? How much did this study cost?
What did this study cost, Doug?
I'm not too sure. I mean, I'm gonna take a guess, between fifty to seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so, so my next statement is, so since out of the, what was the total amount of schools? Twenty-eight?
Well, we evaluated forty-some schools. We evaluated through the data collecting process, forty-some schools. Of that evaluation, twenty-six bubbled to the top. Right, and so, go ahead.
So what my question is, with what the study cost us, is it anything wrong now? Because I know you're kind of trying to say that the study is completed. What, with there being a door-to-door with these last schools, especially with the importance of it is, as far as sidewalks, to go to the school and, you know, make an appointment and actually talk to the folk on those that, we have missed those twenty-odd schools.
Well, I, I got you. Um, no, this is, uh, there's no direction or push from council, I mean, from staff for y'all to approve this tonight. As you may recall, when we did the Market House Study-
Yes, sir.
What did the council ask us to do? We had received maybe a hundred different people who showed up, and y'all said, "This sounds good, this sounds well. Please go back out and recamembass," and we came back with several hundred respondents.
Yes, sir.
I would tell you, if you would go to the slide, though, where the ranking system was listed, this was an add-on beyond a scientific approach. It, any principal that would have come before you or would come before you now and says, "Would you like sidewalks?" What are they gonna say?
Yes.
If, is any principal gonna come before you and say, "We don't re, agree with the recommendations, we need more pedestrian safety." So the, looking at, that's not the quite, uh, that, that, we had the one with had the green lines on it, it may have been one back. That one there. The weighting of this was not based on just what people wanted, it was based upon a variety of other factors. But ultimately, this is consistent with best practices. But the best practice that the council has always also asked for is for thorough engagement. And with, um, between notifying the school representatives that were here participating in the four charrettes, going through the superintendent's office, if there is a desire, and I think I hear that, for us to, um, bring this back to you after we've knocked on the doors and talked to all the schools, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, I, I think that's understandable, especially, especially of the schools.
Now, I would, I would point out, if I can't jump, I'm sorry.
You can, but, but especially for those schools, Mr. City Manager, that totally need, and as, as was stated, walking in trenches and making trenches on the side, especially those particular schools.
Right.
Uh, because when I look at a couple of the schools, and I don't know them all, but a, a couple of them that were in my district, I know how they look, and I know that they have the sidewalks, and I know that they have the handicap accessibility that have been put into the, the, uh, the, the curves over the last couple of years, uh, and, and, and still going, taking place. So at least with those particular ones, now, council can kind of say their own thoughts, but I think that would be worth-
Yes, sir, it was no problem doing it, and if, if that is the direction of councils, we're happy to go back and do that. Um, I would ask, though, of the twenty-nine that we prioritized, um, and there, we think we said there were forty-nine schools that were included totally. I don't believe of that forty-nine that the ones outside adjacent to the skid, such as Pine Forest, were included in their original grouping because it is right outside, as Mayor Protem said, right outside the city. Can you confirm that it was not one of the ones? And, and even if it, i, if it wasn't, let's assume it was not. We can definitely go and we can say, "Are there opportunities for adjustments there?" Whether, but we would be somewhat limited in some of the resources we might be able to bear, but using our partners at FAMPO and the school system, we might be able to add, um, those recommendations in. But if that's the, uh, consensus and recommendation of council, we can definitely, I think, bring this back to you at your August work session. I don't know, uh, we may be able to get to principals while, uh, the schools are almost out of session. Um, and if nothing else, we'll also relay council's, um, strong concern through, not only the schools directly, but also the superintendent's office, that we made available an opportunity for them to comment. And for whatever reason, whether it was a lack of a phone call on our part or something else, that, that didn't occur.
So to the maker of the motion, would that be a problem in adding that to the motion? Or would that need to be an additional motion for this?
I think y'all could give me direction to say, "Bring it back in August, once you've gotten additional feedback or if nothing else made the door-to-door," and we'd be happy to do that.
That's fine with me. I'm asking the maker of the motion.
And it would also give us a chance to follow up on the item that, um, Councilmember McNair, um, asked me about, some of the funding items which may be in place.
That would have, who seconded it? Was it, um, we'll have to go to Councilmember Thompson if he's willing to do that.
Let me just state that I did all I could to make sure I notified all forty-nine schools. I went over, bent over backwards by going out of my way of contacting the school superintendent to make sure he notified all schools. I think we're going around in circles if they weren't notified and just didn't want to participate. Let me just say, let me, let me finish, let me just, let me finish. If this doesn't delay the process, I have no problem with you circling back. If we don't already have the funding for it, I have no problem with us circling back. Let's just say that I believe that, uh, Mr. Zach, Ms. Sheila, I believe the entire team did their due diligence in doing everything that they could to this, to make sure that this was a comprehensive plan to bring back to council. I don't want us to, uh, uh, try to shade them as if they didn't do it. Uh, let's just say it was a miscommunication on everybody's part. I will change my motion to make sure that we bring this back in August on consent. Once you do your due diligence, to make sure that the other thirteen schools be notified and make the corrective changes to bring forth. Can I get a second?
That would have to be Councilmember Hondros. You good with that?
I mean, I might be, so is this not gonna have any effect delaying it two months? Like we talked about Rayford Road, that's already being paved, or not? I would think we could pass this today and still go back, circle back with the other schools.
Correct, that was what I was thinking, was wanting-
Could we not? Because if we read the plan and then circling back with the school changes the grading, we still passed the plan, the, the grading just changed.
Well, I don't want it to change the DOT doing the project in front of Seventy First School Road, if they're in the process of pages.
That's why I think we should, I'm of the opinion we should move forward today.
Okay, let's, 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 let's just put it, why don't we just go- Okay, let's, 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 let's just put it, why don't we just go with it like it is and move on? Okay, we'll take them, are you good with that, Councilmember here? Okay, I appreciate it, I appreciate, let's, let's just go ahead. Let's, let's vote. The original vote, let's vote. Yes, Councilmember, oh, okay.
Let me restate my motion. My motion would be to approve the supplemental Fayetteville Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan Study and place it on a consent agenda for adoption. But let me also make sure that schools that went, that haven't been notified have the appropriate time to go back to the, Mr. Zach and his committee, for additions to the supplemental plan to bring back to us for future recommendations. That sounds good? Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Just, if you haven't voted, vote, same thing. There we go, no, no. All right, thank you. So let's go to six point oh-six.
Last Tuesday, during the UDO Housing Committee, they were listening to a presentation. So from that meeting, partway through, the chairman of that committee said, the chairman of that committee said, "Can I stop that presentation and have us all listen to it?" So from that moment, a series of things happened. Councilmember Honduras presented to you last Tuesday night, and because I just watched it, let me also add in between, I just had a grandson born, and now we're back, and now we're also back. Yeah, I didn't get to do that today, but I did last few days. And here we are with a presentation that the UDO Housing Committee was looking at incentives for development in the city, tied to housing primarily, but others. And this is a presentation for the full council to hear, rather than you hearing different versions of it, coming straight to you from one of our most recent graduates in the field of planning, who's also just passed his AICP credentialing, and he just has to wait a little bit of time for that. So Demetrius Mutos, for those of you that don't know.
Thank you, Dr. Newton, yes. My name is Demetrius Mutos, I'm a city planner here in the city Fayetteville. Yeah, so a little bit of background, the UDO Housing Committee did ask us to come to them with a pretty high-level amount of data. I use the term "data" loosely, it's really going cross-eyed, looking at various jurisdictions' development ordinances, about what they do as far as development incentives go. So again, this is high-level, it is a comparative review that focuses on how we as a city stack up, and where there might be opportunities in the future for us to strengthen our own approach as far as development incentives go. So what we did is we reviewed six common incentive categories. Here we have affordable housing, sustainability, and green infrastructure, open space and conservation, transit-oriented and mixed-use development, historic preservation and adaptive reuse, and flexibility and legal tools. Each of these categories reflects tools that are used to shape the character and outcome of development, whether they be through bonuses, which is what incentives are, these incentives are all bonuses, regulatory relief, or formal agreements. This right here is where we see the most significant divergence between us and our peer cities. Durham and Wilmington stand out by tying density or height bonuses directly to enforceable affordability. Cary uses a density bonus system that's linked to income thresholds. By contrast, we currently do not integrate housing affordability into our development incentives, and this is notable given the conversations around the gap in access to This is an area where Fayetteville is actually doing better, where we shine a little bit. High Point uses a system, a menu system, that grants bonuses for items like green roofs or LEED certification. You can see some examples here in the picture, some of them are a bit hyperbolic, but on the right side there, the solar panels is more typical of what you might see. Greensboro has a one-hundred-and-twenty-point scoring system tied to watershed protection and green performance. Cary links sustainability with open space and overlay zones. And here in Fayetteville, we offer up to a twenty percent density bonus and allow two additional stories for sustainability features. This does put us in line with our peer cities as far as sustainability incentives go. Many cities in our, in our state link density bonuses to the protection of open space or conservation area. And so Cary uses overlay zones to manage this. This approach is less about blanket requirements and more about incentive-driven protection. Here in Fayetteville, this is something that we could consider using similar overlays in sensitive areas to encourage clustering or preserve natural areas, however, this is a, go ahead, sir.
Let me just ask a question real quick, because as I was trying to read this, I was trying to understand it, because this is really confusing to me with all the acronyms and everything else. And you just speak, you just spoke about Cary. In this state, Cary features a particular detailed bonus system within its C R O D, granting a five or three percent increase in allowable lots for every one percent bonus on a space preserved in a L R C and a L, and a V L C R sub-district respectively. Historic preservation credits further enhance bonuses. Can you explain that paragraph to me, please?
Yes, sir. So essentially, that means if a huge developer goes from, say, ten percent to twenty percent open space in a project, they can get up to a fifty percent bonus in lot yield, which is a huge incentive to cluster homes and leave larger areas untouched. So say you're, you're subdividing a residential neighborhood, and you have a baseline requirement of having ten percent open space, but say you go above and beyond that, you restructure the subdivision to be a little bit more tight, and you leave up to twenty, up to twenty percent open space, and they'll allow you to have more lots in that subdivision than otherwise might be required.
Now explain the historic preservation credits.
We'll get into historic preservation a little bit later, but can't speak to that exactly at the moment.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So, so with that chart, if you look at it, and Councilmember Honduras, you might be able to explain it better than me, you see that Cary is at the top, Winston-Salem, are we, it says blue, are we the bottom?
Yeah, sorry, the legend is a little bit out of order there, but we are on the bottom there.
Yes, so Cary's growing, Winston's growing.
And we're at the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so for us, we offer a one-to-one bonus, as far as open space and conservation goes. A one percent density increase for each one percent of open space that is preserved, above ten percent, which is our baseline, up to a maximum of twenty percent. So yes, compared to Cary specifically, we are a little bit lower on that list.
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. One of the clearest ways that cities can make their area car and pedestrian-friendly is by supporting compact, and by supporting compact growth, is by incentivizing walkable mixed-use development near transit. This is the sort of thing that we talk about, when we talk about transit-oriented development. So, for example, Raleigh has a dedicated tool for this called Frequent Transit Development Option. It offers height bonuses, typically two stories, along high-frequency transit corridors, and expands allowable uses to include apartments, small offices, and civic buildings. In Wilmington, they grant density and floor-area ratio bonuses for vertically mixed projects that also include long-term affordable housing. In Concord, they allow design flexibility in mixed-use zones if developers provide equivalent public benefits aligned with, with their comprehensive plan. Here in Fayetteville, we do have a, what's called a SECO, which is a suburban activity center overlay, which does enable up to eight stories in mixed use by right-along major corridors, which does support an urban, a walkable urban forum. But this is something that could definitely be reprioritized to be more of an urban rather than a suburban overlay, in order to use more of those transit-oriented incentives. The, the common thread between the past three, three slides or so is that effective incentives align infrastructure, land use, and public benefits, so it's not just all about allowing higher density or anything like that. It's a part of it, and not just a part of it. So anybody have any questions, real quick, before we move on?
Break it.
All right. So historic preservation, adaptive reuse, we also do pretty well here. We have an adaptive reuse section of our code where we allow adaptive reuse of structures, even in single-family zones, and we waive parking requirements. Raleigh complements regulatory relief with direct financial incentives in their historic districts. Wilmington incorporates preservation into their central business district incentive matrix. And all of these things show how preservation can be a core part of revitalization and not just a constraint. So for instance, just across the street, we have a train station that still looks very much like a train station, but is incorporated a little bit into being a subway as well. So we have new uses going into things that are historic and aren't necessarily being required to be brought down and totally rebuilt. Flexibility and legal tools include things like development agreements, transfers of development rights, and economic provisions. And we also, in the city of Fayetteville, utilize conditional zoning as a legal tool, flexibility zoning tool, as used quite frequently here. Durham uses statutory development agreements for large unphased projects, or large and unphased projects. We have the capacity to use these as well, for, particularly for complex developments. High Point and Concord go further, using TDRs, which is Transfer of Development Rights and zoning relief tools to support infill and conservation goals. So here's what we're seeing across the board. Most cities that we looked at use density and height bonuses as their primary tool. Stronger programs tie those bonuses to affordability or measurable sustainability. Here in Fayetteville, our strengths really lie in sustainability and reuse, but we do have that missing piece, which is affordability integration. So we're really holding our own here in Fayetteville in several areas. Again, those green, green development, sustainability, and adaptive reuse, but we do have room to grow when it comes to that affordable housing piece and incentive transparency.
Okay, so, one second. So when we, if you look at this, and I hate that we don't have this in front of us, but when you look at this chart, we do everything but the first column. Oh, do I have it? Oh, perfect. So did we not, Chairman, did we not change the wording on that? Because that really, I remember, that's not, yes, we changed that onsite, because that's really a false statement of, we changed, yeah, it's not in here.
I, I remember adding it onsite, but I, I can't remember what the exact wording was.
And, and I need you to explain that, because that, that's not truly what it was. So it was the twenty percent, if I'm not mistaken?
So where it's a little bit misleading is that, yes, we are doing things in the city to try and improve affordable housing. This is a fact. Affordable housing in this context means specifically doing, having development incentives that have to do with including a certain percentage of units inside of a development that might be another percentage or less, or less than or equal to a certain percentage of the area median income. So for example, in, in Raleigh, we talked about their, one of their incentives is, is two-plus stories, but then they also have, in those two-plus stories, they have to have, I think it's twenty percent of the units in those additional stories have to be equal to or greater than forty percent of, sixty percent of the area median income, is very massive.
So, so, yeah, let me help you out on that. So when we were discussing this, what we, and this is why we wanted to bring it to council, we wanted y'all to be able to see it. So in Raleigh, and Durham, and all these places that have these high-rise buildings, they get credits if they put twenty percent of it in affordable housing. They do it in New York, they do it everywhere. So when we were looking at it, we realized we're doing everything, and people can, you know, it's, it's less expensive to build up, you get the credits if you do the twenty percent. So we wanted everybody to see this, so we could bring it back to the table and get that checkmark, because it's something we're not doing, as everybody around us is, in all five cities ahead of us, except Greensboro's not doing it. It's us in Greensboro. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes. So, yeah, again, you know, as, as we refine the UDO continuously and, and our broader planning toolkit, these comparisons, we think, help spotlight what, what is working, as you can see from this table here, and what we might bring home to do in the future. With that, I, I'd like to hand it back over to the Chair of the UDO Housing Committee, where this, this item actually came from, and I'm here for questions, of course.
All right, Councilmember Honduras, I have you.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to kind of wrap this up in a bow, we received the UDO semi-annual report. This kind of sums up, or that, that kind of summed up what we had done the last six meetings, which is the last six months, we typically meet once a month. I wanted council to see this, because I think it's a worthy cause. As we all know, whether it's a council member request, or whether, in this case, it's a committee, you know, we can only tie up so much staff time, and we've pretty much expended that. So by approving this today, accepting this report, it will allow staff to further invest resources in the way of staff time to come back to us with their recommendations on what kind of incentives, you know, we may want to codify in our development standards and ordinances. So I'll answer any questions, if not, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I'm trying to find a document that was shared with me, that I wanted to ask Mr. Mutos if this is within the scope of what the UDO Committee and Chairman Honduras is asking for. Sorry, I'm just asking for a moment to try and find it. I don't know if there's any other questions other than mine, so if I can just pause, Madam Protem, and come back as I try and bring that document up.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. City Manager, I want to ask you a question, because this is a conversation that I think I've had with you, the mayor, and the Mayor Protem, as I go to Raleigh and visit my daughter. When I go down one of the main corridors, they're just blowing up with houses and apartments on both sides, going all the way to Knightdale, where she lives. And I'm looking at the Raleigh incentive, where it says, "Limits affordable housing incentives to projects near transit." Near transit. Near transit. Offering height increases of twenty percent of bonus story units that are affordable for at least thirty years. Is that practical? Where can we build something near transit here in Fayetteville? And why would we hold affordable housing for thirty years when housing prices change every eight years? Will we get a revow?
So, so, you know, I, I have a friend that's in New York City, and it's kind of like, twenty percent, you build high-rises, and twenty percent, basically, I mean, I shouldn't say it's the same thing, but it's like, a certain amount of rent, you know, it's, by income, twenty percent of the building is affordable housing. So you can be in that, if twenty percent of that building is affordable housing, you get, you can be able to go up two or three stories, and that's how they're doing it all over.
Got it.
And that, that's why, when this all happened, the aha moment came with the three of us and said, "We have to share this."
Got you.
So to piggyback on both your comments, it's the bonus, so let's say there was a project, in my project, based on our UDO, I can do a hundred units, right? So maybe we offer a hundred, like, a bonus of thirty units. So now you can do a hundred and thirty, but I have to earmark twenty or thirty, a certain number of those units have to be affordable housing. So I'm getting more, so my project still theoretically should cash flow with my- So my project still theoretically should cash flow with my base units, the 100. I'm getting a bonus. And the reason I'm getting the bonus, so like, let's say we let them do 130 units, I get 10 extra market rate units. So now I got 110, but I got 20 that are, that are the affordable housing. So, and, and just real quick before I forget, there was another thing you mentioned earlier, Demetrius in his presentation about the, like a residential subdivision where some other cities, peer cities, they allow if you do, instead of what the code, the minimum the code calls for, which is 10% green space, you do 20% green space. You get that back in density. So you get the same units, it's just more dense, really as, as it pertains to what we do. I, I think it's more, and the staff can speak to this in, in different departments, not just development services, but public services. It's more cost effective for us to deliver services in a denser neighborhood than a sparsely populated.
I'm tracking, but that, that's going to piggyback off my next question. I was just trying to get to the city manager to answer. I'm going to use the new housing project that is phenomenal by my church. I don't know the name of the housing project. It's just been built, it's right off of All American on Santa Fe, it's almost at the corner of Santa Fe and Bragg Boulevard.
Yes.
If we were to put transit over there, would that give them an incentive is my question? Because there's no transit over there.
Well, the, it potentially could. One of the things I think that, and this is a, is an excellent longer term conversation. We had picked up one, Jeff, on debt, that we were going to be doing a session on how the council does debt. And for Adam and Kelly, this may be also an opportunity for us to talk transit oriented development and pushing on these incentives. So the answer is yes, that could be something. But one of the things that you look at is when you look at the rents that they're charging there, they're probably at the $1,300 to $1,400 range. Is that about right?
I, I don't know.
And, and so we are a, we are not a, the, people don't pick where they live necessarily based upon transit availability at the moment. You know, it's, it's on affordability. And so, because for long periods of time, there are parts of our city which are, we could consider affordable, but you still got to walk about six to eight blocks before you can get out to, to a bus stop. Like significant portions of Massey Hill or even way down at the bottom in Bonny Doones or, you know, all the way back in the back, you have to walk out to one of the main corridors. But clearly in those larger cities, when they market it to you, if you've been to DC, the closer you get to Washington DC, the taller the buildings get. And everyone is talking about being on, what do you call it, a jump lane where you basically wait on the side of the road for somebody to pick you up to ride in and get through the HOV lane. So you're absolutely correct. That does make a difference depending on the density. I think that beyond what's just on the chart of waiting for a developer to come to you to ask for more bunk debt, density bonuses, I think that where the UDO Committee may be heading in, and I know that staff would be supportive of this, is to saying that you go out and you market to those folks to do the affordable housing, which I think is now that you've got the $12 million or thereabouts in the general bond is that you say, we got this money. If you build it, we have this available to you. But why 30 years? I think that, that may be something that's negotiable for those cities. But in Raleigh or Durham, they want to be able to say that it's a long-term solution to a long-term problem. And here, we're just looking for people to help us build affordable housing as well as market rate. Because again, $1,400 a month for rent is a lot of money.
That's a lot. A lot of money. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sir, that is another great presentation. Doug, y'all are on a roll today.
Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I found my little hand to dandy document. And again, Mr. Mutos is trying to understand if in the scope of what the UDO is, kind of began the research process on, and what, what you're now with majority council consensus are going to continue to look into. I see six kind of items here. Are you saying that you're kind of going to just focus on the one that we're missing? Or are you going to look at some other ways to also add to the other five?
We're, we're doing everything except that.
Well, I, I guess.
It shows right there.
What I'm trying to ask staff is that we might be doing something as it relates to sustainability. And I guess there was one or two things where the staff said that we were performing as well, if not better than some other cities. But I think there were some other ones, and correct me if I'm wrong, especially with, well, there's a few of them here, that maybe we are doing some things related to it, but maybe not in a, to the extent that makes us particularly competitive. So is, that's what I'm trying to ask. We might have checked the box to some extent, but is there more that we can be done on those other categories?
Yes, there is. There's more that can be done.
Is that going to be part of?
And we will continue to make things better for the entirety of the city. And that will mean places where we have a check mark, we're going to see what we can do even better.
That's still a part of what is being requested today. And then I know that you said repealing certain parking mandates makes sense when it comes to certain preservation areas, but even beyond just historically relevant areas, are repealing those parking mandates something that you're, that you've seen function well in other communities as a way to incentivize development?
Yes, sir. And we have already done much of that. If you remember, we took our main street, bumped it out to 450 acres of downtown one and two, where we have lessened the parking requirements, in fact, taken them away in many regards. We've seen that. We also know that we have to be careful and the development community knows what their numbers are. So we put in some artificial numbers. That's why you see the 1976 malls with extra parking. And a lot of communities are going back and redeveloping in those mall areas and seeing more things. We've seen a portion of that, but even housing tends to come into those locations. So yes, to the parking, yes, to these other areas where we can improve. And we know that we have done a lot. But as the UDO Housing Committee has pointed out, there are things that we don't think the development community has heard enough about.
When you say heard enough about, is that the thing you're saying about advertising the incentives that you're trying to propose?
Yep.
Two final questions. Eliminating minimum lot size requirements in existing neighborhoods, is that a part of what you guys are going to be researching?
We will see where that goes. But when you actually look at how many dwelling units per acre, that removes lot sizes. It's a, it's a different way of looking at the numbers.
Do we already currently permit backyard cottages or mother-in-law suites in all residential zones?
Yes, we do.
And then the last one, are we?
And we were one of the very few communities in this state to be doing it. And we've been doing it a long time.
And then the last one is allowing single-family home conversions to duplex or triplex by right? Correct.
Well, that, that one's going to take a, a longer answer. And I think we should not give you that one right now.
So the question is?
I will answer it in two parts though, because I know.
The question is simply is that going to be part of your research? You can come back to me with a two-part, three-part of the future occasion, but I just want to make sure that's part of the questions you're looking into.
It's both building code as well as zoning.
Sure, sure.
We can come back on that.
Yeah, as long as that's part of what we're researching, I'll be glad to support this motion.
Okay, thank you. We have Mayor Colton on the phone.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So Dr. Newton, I caught the tail end of that, so I apologize, council, if I missed something. But I think that I wanted to piggyback on what Councilman Honduras talked about. What I'm hearing is that because we're low in that area over there on the affordable side, I don't think we've really taken advantage of the mixed income model that other cities use to close that gap. In other words, that you, that you will have market rate or just below market rate mixed with some of the affordable. Because I think the affordable area is kind of crowded and very competitive for those, for those awards that come out. And I believe that because our rental market is so, so high because of the, the Fort Bragg allowance and, and occupancy levels are high, that there may be something that are for the folks in the middle. You know, again, I, I push homeownership for the working class people, but until they do that, they still have to pay rent somewhere. And if, if they are, you know, if our median income is where it is, but they don't get the base allowance, and let's say they're a local government worker, they're kind of in the squeeze category. So I think that maybe incentivizing some of the mixed income, go a little harder on some of the just below the housing voucher, may take some of the pressure off the rental market and attract some of the developers because nobody's going to put their capital up if they're not in the affordable housing space for market rate and then dip below that without some incentive. So, and that can either be some type of expedited processing of, of some of these applications or some other bonuses that, so some other communities are finding success with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Honduras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To piggyback on what you said, I don't know if you were able to see the whole presentation, but this kind of piggybacks on the report from UDO we received last meeting. And by receiving this presentation, all we're doing, we're not adopting anything today in the way of incentives models or anything. We're just allowing staff to continue their work and they'll come back to us in the future with their recommendations on what to do. So with that, I will move to receive the presentation.
Can I get a second? Second by Councilmember Green, she's on the committee. Alright, call for the vote. Did you have discussion, Councilmember Benavente? Did you have discussion? Okay.
Green.
Okay, so we have one more. Who else? Who are we missing? Okay. Alright, that's right. Okay, that passes unanimously. Alright, let's go to 6.07, temporary use standards for special events, proposed nuisance party ordinance.
Good afternoon, council. Or evening, I guess. We're, we're in the next timeframe here. As you remember, Tuesday night, it was, this item was on as an admin report and you asked that it be brought to a work session for presentation and, and discussion. I've got a short presentation to talk about temporary use permits for special events. Those items take place on private property. They're issued for cultural, musical events, festivals, fairs, carnivals, circuses, items of that. They are limited in time, does not involve construction, alteration of the structure, and is reviewed, approved and issued by development services at the moment. There are several general standards. I don't know if you guys can see all these. I don't think they're, this made it to your packet due to time. One of the main ones there is not detrimental to the surrounding area or to the public health, safety or general welfare. Couple of the additional standards, no unreasonable risk or significant impediments to pedestrian or vehicle traffic, injury to persons, public or private disturbances. The key ones I think you guys would be looking at are burden to police and fire and cannot cause adverse effects on public health and safety. Some of the conditions for special events, provide for parking ingress egress, no nuisance created, provide sanitary and medical facilities, pick up the trash, and can be required to provide security and safety measures. What we're looking at now for some options for you guys, amend the temporary use process, permit process to require review and approval by police department and fire department, amend temporary use permit process, adding provisions such as limiting bags to, excuse me, only clear bags or, and no unaccompanied minors, and amend the code to increase compliance time for failure to obtain a permit using life safety issues. City Attorney's Office has piggybacked onto this a little bit, so they have a few slides that they're going to show. But if you have any questions, I'm available now. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to them and you guys can hear what they have to say.
Councilmember Benavente.
Could you go back a couple of slides to that one? What does burden to police and fire mean?
I would believe that would mean cause excess calls of service.
And so you're saying that if I wanted to do some kind of a special event and I'm requesting some kind of permit to do so, previously I had to agree to those first three things, and now these are, these next two things are new additions?
No, the, the last two are already in the ordinance.
Okay, so you're, you're just saying that's the authority that you're pulling from?
Right.
Okay. And then can you go back to your recommendations then? And now you're saying that right now, the police department and the fire department do not have a say in the permitting of a special use, a temporary use permit for an event?
They do, but we haven't involved them in the past.
You have not involved them in the past?
Correct.
And just last question, because I'm trying to understand what this is impacting exactly is, this is, my understanding is that if someone wanted to get a special use permit for an event, they've got to go through Parks and Rec, who kind of, oh, go ahead, stop me.
That's for an event on city property.
Uh huh.
This is for an event on private property. Most of the time, we don't require it in, in our department, but they do involve PD and fire for various reasons and as far as hiring off-duty police officers or sheriff's deputies, things of that nature.
So you're saying you want the standards that are more or less practiced presently for city spaces to apply to private property events?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
What we're, what we're saying is, we were looking for other ways in which we could bolster the safety of events that are held on private property. That we have in our ordinance, the requirement for a temporary use permit, heretofore, we have, I think, and this Dave can disagree with me on this, and please do if you see it differently, we've used this as a way of notification. Because now if someone came in and said that we want to do a, a carnival, let's say in the Krispy Kreme parking lot on Bragg Boulevard, we already know, you can't even get in the parking lot some days with cars being out.
Sure.
So that would be probably one that Dave and I would say would be a hard no. But here, but largely if somebody were having something, let's say at the mall, and, and I think Dr. Newton was just up saying these large shopping centers that have unused portions. It's basically been acknowledgement that it's there, but not necessarily us doing push or pull. What we're saying now is, is that based upon what we've seen as a concern in council's direction, not only on public property where we hold events, but also as we see with the unfortunate shooting of a young lady out, was it Riley Road and Clifftown? We want to bolster what's already in the ordinance by also putting a checklist or reasonable standards in place for fires review and the police department's review. One of the things that the city attorney and I, before we bring this back to you at some point in time, because this is really tonight, looking at as a report where we are, before we bring this back to you, I want to be able to answer, I think, the basis of where I think your questions are, what does it mean to be a burden? And how can that burden be lessened either by requirements for insurance requirements that the property owner has to knowingly accept, that the property owner has to knowingly require of a fencing, all the stuff that you saw the mall do at their most recent carnival, a fence all the way around the perimeter, them saying no bags, clear bags, no unaccompanied minors, all, they're going to close down by 11 o'clock, all the things that currently we're putting on the private owner. We want to, we need to be comfortable that we have the, and the basis, and kick me, Madam Attorney, again, but don't because you'll sick, I don't want to kick that. But she's not feeling well. She's a real trooper. She's been here all day. She's, and even though we've asked her to go home repeatedly, she doesn't feel well. Is, before we come back with this in the form of an ordinance amendment, we, we wanted to make sure that we were meeting our interests with a higher review on fire and police. And there may be some other things too that we would want to lance in there as well. Because this is on private property. This is not depart this on public property. Dave, do you agree with that?
Correct.
Okay.
So just to put a last pin on this, because it sounds like there's a lot more information to be presented before we get close to implementation, is that as it stands, the recommendations that are put here are not presently
the recommendations that are put here are not presently, if I'm, let's just say, I'm 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 that business owner who has a big, big, big parking lot and I want to do um that carnival or whatever the case may be, I feel like doing, right now, I have to reach out to the city of Fayetteville before I do it.
Yes, that's part of the ordinance, and but I can tell you as well.
Presently.
Presently, but for the five that we permitted in the last twelve months, we know there are likely many more. So there's also a requirement um on the city, that if we see something on social media or something else like that, that we proactively reach out, but they have an abatement period of what, ten days?
Ten days.
And so by the time you send a letter telling someone they've got to get a permit and they got ten days to do it, then it's over. So again, those are some of the things that when we looked at it today, we were in here, um we we know we need to tighten up. Um, one of the things too that I would be interested in would be that insurance requirement. Several several of you are in the real estate business or you own property or you're a member of a church.
The majority of the city councils.
Uh, or or are a member of a church that has a large parking lot. If there were a requirement from the church or, which again, churches are different, because again, I don't think they're different. Are they different in the ordinance?
They're not.
I think it's only private property is the one.
Correct.
And Josh is coming up in just a moment, I think, to give that about the second component. Are you coming up?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, is um the uh, if there were a requirement, if I can use you, Councilmember Green, I know if there were a ten million dollar requirement, insurance requirement that you had to carry in order to have something on your property, or they couldn't use your property in that requirement, would that make you feel differently about allowing that unless the police or fire signed off on it? So I think we got two components that we can use. One is with the carnival operators, but I also think that we need to educate our property owners to say, if someone gets injured on your property because you have leased it temporarily to someone who doesn't have these security measures in place.
A lot of microphones on or something? I hear a lot of feedback.
Um, I think Mayor Protem is always on, but um, yeah.
On the head.
Yeah, and um, does that help?
It was a.
Okay. Okay, I think that those could be um some of the things that we want to push on and and today, I think Councilman Thompson saw us making a little bit of that sausage as we were unwinding this, because some of the questions that y'all are asking, I regret that we were asking too, you know, and so tonight is really looking at a report to you guys to say we're working on it, and I think um making sure that we are moving in the right direction for where y'all want us to go. Um, and I think this dovetails with any other questions y'all have of Dave, but also I think it hits on where um Josh is gonna come up in just a moment about some other items too.
Okay, and I have um the mayor on the phone and then um Councilmember Thompson.
Uh, Mayor Protem, thank you. I was gonna wait until after the last slides were presented.
Okay, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My question about the requirement, and maybe this is for Chief Joyce, is there a requirement that you have to have so many secured officers based on the amount of individuals that come to your event? Normally, that's a requirement at any other venue. Is this gonna be part of the ordinance, Chief? Or?
If, um, I think the security profile, I know that's what we require on public, on land.
I'm talking about private.
Yeah.
So when you're talking about special event planning, that's that's part of that equation per how many hundred persons you're gonna have in attendance?
That's one officer per one hundred?
Right.
Okay, thank you, Chief. That's what I need to know.
It 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 goes by the hundred, so if you're gonna have five hundred people there, you may only need two officers at that time.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Councilmember here.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Mayor, do you want to wait, or do we have, we have more?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I think they still have more slides, right?
They do, yes. Yes, sir.
Well, how do I make this the main slide up here? Ah, look at that. Okay, um, well, good evening. Uh, Josh Hall, the police attorney with the city attorney's office, assigned to the police department. Even better. Okay, so um here to introduce the nuisance party, it's a it's a proposal for an ordinance that would um give you a definition of what a nuisance party would be. Um, there is a gap currently right now in in state statutes and and how um parties can be enforced here in the city of Fayetteville, and I I believe this ordinance would help close that gap so that the city could address these nuisance parties. So specifically, what what is a nuisance party? Um, I'm not gonna read all these, I'll let you kind of look at them, but what you will notice quickly is that a lot of these one through ten are already unlawful by state statute. Um, however, these are kind of the one-off situations where law enforcement is dispatched, um or, you know, they come across somebody in the public and they're able to make that arrest. With a nuisance party, though, and I will refer to section B, um, any person being the owner, the occupant, the tenant, or otherwise having any possessory control of any degree of any premises, who either sponsors, conducts, hosts, invites, uh permits, or continues to allow a gathering to continue, which is or becomes a nuisance, would be in violation of this um ordinance. So, we're not talking about, you know, a graduation party or a birthday party, a family reunion, something like that. What we are talking about is when some of these nuisance parties turn into this type of activity, state statute does not allow the city currently at this time to kind of shut the party down. Uh, this statute, or excuse me, this ordinance would allow that, and it would be based on these sort of enforcement penalties here. As you can see, there's three separate penalty provisions. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be the criminal penalty starting out, doesn't have to be the civil penalty. Sometimes there are these um uh parties that are published on social media that, you know, within two weeks, they sell enough tickets, people come to these parties, and then a lot of negative things happen. Um, so what we can do under number two here is any sort of injunctive or other equitable relief. So the city can apply to the court, um and uh, you know, pursue some sort of cause of action to shut the party down ahead of time. Nobody gets charged, it just lets people know that this is unlawful activity, do not conduct this type of activity. However, if this nuisance party is actively ongoing, certainly there's the criminal penalty there, which is a class three misdemeanor, or a civil penalty.
All right, Councilmember here.
Sir, you stated that, and I was trying to read along with you, but if to to shut a party down or uh before something begins, I was trying to understand, how how do you do that before it begins?
Social media.
Is this if, well, I was getting ready to go through, okay, but that was one of the items, if you if you see it that way, uh or some other way, well, I'll leave it to you, a- answer that for me.
Sure. Before it shuts down. So, and I won't give specifics, but uh there was a, last year, um there was a pool party that was being hosted and the flyer that was circulating across social media.
I understand what you mean.
They were selling alcohol and things like that.
Okay.
Advertising that, that would obviously be a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't even.
I understand.
The A L E.
Yeah, 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 I I understand. I got you now. You can, you can proceed.
Okay, um, so these are the criminal uh penalties and or civil penalties and civil remedies.
Yes, I became a TikTok star over this. Um, yes, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. So, maybe I'm just overlooking it, because I just got the um slide shows, but does this apply, maybe you said earlier, to commercial properties like hotels and, or is there different, separate ordinance for that?
Well, this is certainly for um, it would be private property. And specifically, if we look, well, it's not on the ordinance here, but in section C, it says this section shall not apply to gatherings held at locations holding valid entertainment, uh center permits, or any other uh gathering authorized by the code.
So do we have a ordinance for like commercial properties, uh when it concerns nuisance, or you just follow the the normal regulation law? You know why I'm asking, because of these hotels that I'm getting calls about?
Yes, sir. We generally would use this general statutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we don't need anything city-wise to enforce anything? You just go straight up to the, okay?
Okay, do I have any other questions? Um, count, uh, hold on, Councilmember Benevente, I will see, um, since you're round two, I will see. Have you gone on this one? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Uh, Mr. Hall, I'm trying to pull up on the um C cam, what exactly the change is, because I guess you were saying that um some of this stuff is already North Carolina general statute, um, but when it comes to what you're presenting on, what exactly is like the red line um edit that you're adding to? What's the real big difference between what we've been doing and what you're proposing that we do?
Well, this will be an entirely new ordinance.
I see.
That we have. Yes, sir.
By combining some things that are currently you're not allowed to do and just kind of stating it, um, is there is there any departure from, well, i- is there any portion of this that's a really big departure from what's already state law?
I think the difference between, and again, this is where I kind of talked about uh closing the gap.
Yes, sir.
Um, when you look at, you know, indecent exposure, that's already unlawful to do.
Yes, sir.
But when you group that into a party type of activity, um, there's no way to shut down the type of party, these nuisance parties, so you're kind of coupling.
I got pictures.
I don't have any of those for this type of situation. But it kind of, it kind of groups all the, all of this unlawful activity in this nuisance party situation, such that law enforcement and the city would be able to shut down these types of parties.
So you're saying presently, uh, a nuisance party, not by this definition, but just but today, tonight, there there is something that is going down, people calling nine-one-one. You're saying that it's, not necessarily that it's not possible, I guess that's that's the part where I'm trying to distinguish of, you know, is this giving law enforcement an ability that they otherwise did not have to address any of these individual occurrences?
That's correct, and and again, I'll I'll go back to the specific example I gave uh just a few moments ago. Uh, there was this giant pool party, um vehicles were parked all over the roadway, there was security, um, conducting almost what a police officer would do in the street as far as uh letting people kind of come and go, alcohol was being sold unlawfully. Law enforcement certainly could have gone to that situation and arrested that one person who um was directing traffic, or that one person selling alcohol, but the party is in and of itself, that was still a nuisance party under this city ordinance, would still be allowed to continue operating as it was. If law enforcement, based on this ordinance, is able to go and certainly, you know, maybe make those one or two arrests, or whoever the culprits are, and the nuisance is no longer there, this ordinance would not take effect, because there would no longer be a nuisance at that, at that time.
That's the situation presently, is what you're saying. You're saying that right now, if your uh that hypothetical party was going on, they went and addressed the two things that are obvious, right? There's somebody with a cooler that says one dollar a beer, you know, you can handle that, someone kind of directing traffic in a way that's not actually what you're supposed to be doing out there, they can address those two individuals, but that without this ordinance, you don't have, or an officer doesn't have the authority to then shut down the entire party, and that's what you guys are seeking?
Correct.
Okay, I guess I just have discussion once the motion is presented.
Okay, um, so before I go to the mayor, um, I I will tell you what I went through last year in my district with this all going on. I pray that nobody has to go through. There was an individual that was having parties, and you could not even get into the neighborhood, you could not get to your home, and they were asking for your I D to where you live before you could get in. And there was basically a lot that we could not do, and it was continuing on every weekend. And um so, um, before I go to the mayor, um, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Uh, I have a one more question. Um, I see this, this is for nuisance party, right? So, do, Michelle, maybe you can help me answer. You probably answered this before privately, but do we have any ordinance in place that when we have a home, particular home inside of a neighborhood who is causing a nuisance, that, do we have an ordinance for like, not just a party, but if the calls for service at that same home keeps happening over and over and over again, do we have any policies in place or anything besides the general um statute? Uh, yeah?
The nuisance in our, in our uh ordinance is mainly um in like the code enforcement.
Right.
Context. Um, so we don't have an ordinance that states if you have X amount of calls for service for police, that that constitutes a nuisance. So that's something that we're looking at and working on, but right now, we would just use chapter nineteen, the general statute, to bring um, uh, it's actually a true nuisance action, it's which would be a civil action court.
And so we're looking at that for residential homes, not just parties or just, but like homes and neighborhoods or whatever, right?
We're looking at that um for specifically for residential, but.
Okay.
But globally, you know, across the city, um, and more particularly for the the nightclubs and the hotels.
Got you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you for um waiting. You're on.
Uh, ye- yes, ma'am, thank you so much. So just two questions. One, um, what is the, what is the protocol for the approval of a permit application? So if somebody applies for it, who makes the decision? Right now, special events has a committee and for public properties, is this something that's solely on the city manager's discretion, and if so, what's the turnaround time expected?
You talking about special events uh for temp use on private property?
Yes, so so if if this is um, yeah, right, yes, sir.
Okay, currently, the the zoning section, planning and zoning of Development Services reviews that, and turnaround time's usually uh two days or less, I would say.
Okay, is that gonna impact your workflow that you have now for other planning and zoning inquiries, or will it be a dedicated person to these type requests?
It shouldn't cause any slowdown. As was stated earlier, we only have about five a year, if that.
For private property? So if we make this the law, uh, to to prohibit or to require these for carnivals and large gatherings on private property, you're saying there's only five requests a year for that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then um, two, just a comment on uh the last portion that was presented, uh about um more of these residential slash uh commercial activities that are taking place around uh swimming pools or parties that uh that commerce is being conducted. I I think the fact that, uh, and and Madam Attorney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, so all of these areas that you're looking to add to give us just cause to shut this down are already statutory, are already statutes, but in and of themselves and apart, even though they're violations individually, uh, until it's collectively, you can't stop the entire gathering. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, sir. We don't have a mechanism um through which we could um require that the party end.
Okay, understood. So, so, you know, last thing I'll say is I think the spirit of the law is clear that the statute has. Um, I think this is one of those cleanup items where we noticed that there's a gap in the city of how we relieve or mitigate it, because a lot of our residents are are dealing with this, and oftentimes when they come out for these various violations that are clear state law violations, that um that the the ongoing problem continues even after the one incident is dealt with. So uh hopefully we can support closing this gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So.
I just was gonna state the ask.
Okay.
Um, council, I just wanted to state the ask for the nuisance party portion of the item. Um, the ask would be for council to um provide consensus to add this to the next agenda um for adoption.
Okay, to, you, who would like to make that motion? Okay, do we?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, um, who's want to second it?
So let me repeat it. I I move that, I move that we uh adopt these recommendations as presented and add to the next council uh meeting for uh adoption and implementation.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Mayor and a second by Councilmember Davis, and discussion for Councilmember Benevente. and discussion for councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Uh, I think the biggest concern I have with this nuisance party definition is that any one of these things can get, you know, someone's situation shut down. If I have, you know, one person who goes outside and didn't wanna wait for the restroom to become available, that there's otherwise no other violations going on, that it really only takes one of these things, um, to, to shut down someone's situation. I, I think that's pretty heavy-handed, and, you know, if we're thinking about what's in people's control, party, the person's house whose it is, you know, if something were, you know, to happen sort of outside of their property, the law is what it is, that person who engaged in that conduct gets in trouble for it. There's not this collective punishment for everybody involved, um, and I think that is something that, you know, people here should kind of maybe think a little more critically about the way it's currently written, um, and that's why I can't, um, vote for this, um, especially knowing that it's coming from a place of one guy and his one swimming pool, um, situation. I think this is, you know, us kind of doing a lot to try and go after that one person. Um, that's all, thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Benevente, and there have been plenty that have expanded, they have expanded through the city of Fayetteville. So I will go to councilmember Davis.
Thank you, so I guess my question is, are you saying like the, what is it, the fees or charges, whatever, goes to the homeowner instead of the people at the party, or whatever actions are?
Uh, I'm saying that if you were having a party at your house illegally, and I went outside and used the bathroom, so I didn't wanna wait in line, I can get your whole party shut down, and, you know, there's just a lot that I think is outside of your control, and, you know, necess- at times, if somebody decides to go do something, um, they ought to get in trouble. Maybe you have to call nine-one-one on somebody who's starting a fight outside at your personal private part, party. Um, and it's almost like you would be, you would feel like you couldn't even call nine-one-one to get help at the risk of your entire party being shut down, now that you found somebody illegally dumping trash outside, or being drunk and disruptive. I think you're actually creating probably less opportunity for law enforcement to come do their job if people feel a sense of, um, it prohibited or inhibited by this law.
Got you.
Um, and I think, you know, this goes to show why it matters to measure.
All right, so do we have anybody else? Are we ready to vote? All right, let's vote.
Three.
All right, I have, okay, that is nine to one with councilmember Benevente voting against. All right. So, the mayor, he, he voted. Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna put the clock on for you. Your turn.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem, so, counsel, I can, I can kind of, uh, ask the request for the next two items, I know it's been a lengthy meeting, uh, I can do them together, but basically, uh, doing a little analysis of, uh, of our current situation, um, looked at Charlotte, sent some information about the historic tax credits, and I know policy is working on it. I just wanted to add the, um, the, the economic, uh, component to what they're doing. Uh, you know, one of the reasons, or the biggest reason, uh, we said that we have this historic district downtown, it's for the economic benefit. Uh, I think policy, upon their research, discovered only maybe two uh, historic tax credits that were taken over the last, uh, since the nineties when this was implemented. Uh, and looking further at that, uh, the agreement that I could find between the Department of Interior, which are the federal, uh, department that will give the federal tax credit, and the fifteen percent given for the state, uh, the federal tax credits are based on the structure, and, uh, they have to send in uh, proof that the structure is historic and the modifications that are being asked in order to get the credit. For the state's fifteen percent, it's my understanding, uh, that it has, uh, three, uh, areas that are designated, uh, Raleigh, Goldsboro, and Madison, uh, that, uh, are areas, uh, not Fayetteville, that would, uh, allow for the fifteen percent additional state, uh, tax credit, and so as you're looking at that, I just wanted to look at, is the economic benefit, um, for what we're causing and how we're putting a lid on our downtown development, and the areas that we have designated, I know you're looking at that, but Charlotte has eight of these districts, and all of them are residential. So I just wanna see if the cost, uh, is worth it for, for what we're missing, for two people in, in almost thirty years to win these awards, and the fact that the state is real specific on the three areas, Goldsboro, Madison, and Raleigh, uh, for what is required for the state. Uh, and the feds are basing it on the building, and so, as you look at that, uh, just looking at the motivation, not necessarily what the historic commission does, what the requirements are, but just is this in the right place, and is there enough reward coming back for it, uh, for us to take a look at making adjustments? Same thing on the fire code, uh, municipalities have, uh, we already have a fire code. My understanding is that we've created a secondary fire district in our, in our entertainment and financial, uh, district that we're trying to encourage, uh, development. How that impacts that, eighty percent of some of the stuff that we see downtown are, um, food and hospitality, uh, something as simple as, uh, outdoor fire pits or things, I'm in Savannah now, and they're downtown near the river, and you see a lot of these restaurants that have, uh, outdoor, uh, fire pits or, or lanterns that are self-contained and non-combustible. Uh, but any secondary fire district that we put in place, uh, after the eighteen thirty-four fire, I think it's time that we reanalyze just to make sure that we're taking advantage of it, because all of these things impede, uh, investment and development in an area that we're trying to speed it up. City View captured it best by saying that downtown has been challenged, uh, with a number of, uh, investments not coming through, but the potential is there, and I think it, it comes with us making, uh, some twenty, twenty-five decisions, and so I would that out in.
All right, Mr. Mayor, so you put both councilmember requests in, in your five minutes. So, um, I have a question for Bene- uh, from Benevente and Honduras. And here.
Um, Madam Mayor Protem, I just move that we, um, extend the time period until all the questions are answered, and we can just, um, not concern ourselves with the arbitrary number.
So, I, if, I think we have an extra five minutes, because he took, he did both of them in one shot, so if, if we can, that's not changing the policy to me. So if we can add five minutes, because he used both times in one.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's fine.
So do you have a question?
Sure, I was just saying that, cuz, you know, you never know, but we'll all approach it at the appropriate time. Mr. Mayor, this, this has nothing to do with the municipal services district or people's ability to opt in and out of that, is that correct?
Uh, no, sir, not this particular request, no.
No further questions.
All right, councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to hear from the fire marshal, uh, if I may, regarding the fire district. Um, specifically, is it needed? Um, downtown, you know, with the technology and advancements in, um, fire safety and, and the tools that FD uses, do we need that?
Councilmember Honduras, during, um, during this part of it, councilmember request, we just, we're not getting any information, we're just kind of, he's done his spiel, we wanna see if he wants to come back. Am I correct in that? Yes.
Yeah, the consensus is ju- just to see if there's a consensus to.
Just to see if there's a consensus.
Yes.
Was that it?
What's the ask, then?
Well, the, the ask is to, to, uh, get a consensus for staff to instruct, uh, staff to come back with us with some, uh, updated recommendations that this actually reflects uh, where we're trying to go as a growing city in our, in our, uh, the heart of our city economic district.
Got you, so I can ask that question in the future?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Um, councilmember here?
Uh, yes, someone sort of threw a little piece of it out there, but uh, as far as the reconsidering, not so much the location, but the whole historic district piece, we, we are going over that right now in policy, so wouldn't that be some information that, that we will be, uh, sending back along with a number of other options we've been discussing?
Uh, yes, sir.
That's mine, I was looking at you for a nod, uh, not so much.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, uh, it's, I guess we're in support, well, I won't say we, but that I would be in support of it, because we're already discussing this, and gonna be bringing probably more in-depth information back, uh, to the council.
Which would help. Um, councilmember, um, do you need to speak, or do you?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, counsel, this is a conversation that, uh, has been going on for a while, as the mayor had asked the policy to look at the HRC district and the fire district. Uh, we're getting a thorough presentation, we've been doing this for the past three months. The first meeting we had, we must've spent two and a half hours and got off the first slot. So we've asked Dr. Newton to come back and give us a presentation, I believe, on the twenty-fourth.
Right.
Twenty-fourth of this month, to give us a more detailed inlook at, uh, uh, the historic district and the fire district, and we'll bring back our recommendations to council.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
So, just, just have one, just have, just have one point, and you guys are doing great, and, and I know this is a, a honorous review. I just wanna make sure that the, what I'm asking specifically, I know there's a lot of, uh, detail in whether you require more or less of the kind of things that are required in historic districts, and you're looking at the duties of a commission, and maybe even the boundaries. What I wanna review is the, is the, the application that we're using here, is it economically worth it? Uh, you know, specifically on that point, as you work through what it looks like in the territory it covers, and the same thing on the fire side, uh, do we have that, that, um, fire district, secondary fire district in the most applicable place, and does it take in, uh, the current day's, uh, technologies like councilman Mahndra, so I, I appreciate it, I know you guys are working hard.
I'm tracking, Mr. Mayor, and we will be thorough with our recommendations.
I think we're covering that.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
All right, so, um, I guess let's do it, let's go for the first one, for the mayor's, um, request for the downtown fire district, can we get an up or down, well, let's vote on the first one, that would be six point oh eight.
I agree.
Missing one person, and it's not the mayor. Okay, there we go, um, ten oh, so, let's go to the next one. Six point oh nine, consider the historic district location.
Uh, green, Madam Protem.
All right, I'm waiting on the. All right, that will be nine to one with councilmember Benevente voting against. Can, thank you, great meeting, y'all, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Good job.